Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Commissioner Ogilvy, would you like to introduce your Pledge of Allegiance class for today?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So I am honored to introduce the Fabens Middle School Student Council Officers, who will be leading us in the pledge. We have with us President Marian Renteria, Vice President Elizabeth Aragon, Secretary Juliana Bañez, Historian Lila Miranda, and of course, we always want to make sure we say hi to the teacher, who is Ms. Veronica Flores. Thank you so much for being here with us today. We really, really appreciate it.
If you can unmute yourself, Ms. Flores.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can I have you unmute yourself?
Ms. Flores, you're muted.
On Teams. You're muted on your cellphone as well. So you're muted on... There you are. We can't hear you. Dial *53 on your cellphone.
We're having technical issues.
No, you're muted still?
Well, if y'all can just start it for us, and we'll finish it up on this side.
They're frozen, yeah.
We'll go ahead and do it from here.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If y'all can hear me, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much. We'll reach out to you to see if we can reschedule for another day. But thank you for being here with us today.
And now we will receive an invocation by Joe Nevadas from Join Us For Justice, the El Paso Chapter of Americans United for Separation of Church and State.
I was looking for the judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to offer this morning's message. First, let us reflect on the tragic events in Israel and Ukraine. The lives of so many have been shattered in war. Friends and family, even here, have been affected. May peace return to these areas soon. I wish to thank each of you for performing an extremely important role, that of serving our beautiful community and its citizens. Your work is of utmost importance and affects the lives of everyone in this county. We, the citizens of El Paso County, are diverse in our financial condition, diverse in our politics and ambitions. Many of us follow one of a multitude of religious faiths, and some, no religious affiliation at all. Yet, we all share a common love for this community and hope for a better future for ourselves, our loved ones, and our community as a whole. As you make your important decisions today, please keep in mind the diversity of our community. May your experience, knowledge, and continued love for this community guide you in your decisions today. Above all, we ask that you be guided by compassion. Compassion especially for those of us in our community that may need our support in these trying times. Thank you once again for serving our county and its citizens.
Thank you very much, sir.
Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Selena Salum and Tamara Gasolum. Commissioner Leon, would you like to make any opening remarks before we begin?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everybody. The judge will not be able to be here today, but I welcome all of you, especially our very bright stars of El Paso, Iciqueta, Belén, and Mrs. Davis, Ms. Davis. Commissioner Stout, welcome back. We were all worried about you. I'm glad you made it in one piece, Commissioners. So thank you very much for joining us, and we've got some great proclamations, resolutions this morning.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4AG. We do have several corrections to read in. For item 4O, we have a correction from the Planning and Development Department. Item 4O should be approve and authorize the county judge to sign the necessary documents pending legal review and approval from the county attorney's office pertaining to donation of real property as follows: 82 Sunland Estates, Number 23, Lot 8, on Mount Holly Oak Street, Op. 1958. Another correction for item 4W from the county attorney's office: approve and authorize the county judge to sign the agreement regarding mutual corporations with the El Paso Community Foundation to assist in providing programs and other support for the El Paso Sheriff's Office for a three-year term, with options to renew for additional three-year terms. Further authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to accept monetary and in-kind donations from the El Paso Community Foundation during the term of the agreement for the funding of community programs, employee morale initiatives, and other support of the Sheriff's Office pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 81.032, Contract #20230912. For item 4U, we request to have this item deleted. Item 4U is pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 262.024A4: approve and authorize the use of professional service exemption to purchasing procedures to select a qualified firm to provide investigative services, legal analysis, and training as requested by the Human Resources Department on behalf of the county of El Paso and authorize Scott Halt, PC, to commence services. Funding is available in General Fund, HR Contract Services, General. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull?
Commissioner. X, item X, please. For me.
Jessica, again, I do want to pull 4W for transparency purposes, and 4R, please.
4R and 4W. Any others?
Make a motion with those exceptions to approve.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego is absent. Motion carries. Item 5, Resolutions. 5A: Approve and adopt a resolution designating November 2023 as Crime Stoppers of El Paso, Inc. Month.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. And I am honored to be able to read this into the record. And I think we have Sergeant Zambrano. I can't see you from behind the podium. Thank you for being here, and I know that some of the board members from Crime Stoppers are also here. What I'll do is read the resolution, and if you don't mind saying a few words, I really appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir.
Whereas Crime Stoppers of El Paso, Inc., for 45 years, has been working in partnership with the community. All area law enforcement agencies and all news media is the only nonprofit crime-fighting organization that provides the community a legal way to anonymously report crime and provides rewards to tipsters. And whereas Crime Stoppers of El Paso, Inc., continues to implement the Campus Crime Stoppers Umbrella Program, partnering with our schools to help keep students safe. And whereas Crime Stoppers of El Paso, Inc., has impacted the county by assisting area law enforcement through anonymous tips in the arrest of 4,744 offenders, solved 6,499 cases, seized $48,800,000 illegal narcotics, recovered $4.5 million in stolen property, and paid $1.2 million in rewards to anonymous tipsters. And whereas El Paso continues to be recognized as one of the safest communities in the nation, and law enforcement agencies give Crime Stoppers credit for being a major contributor to this success. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that the month of November 2023 be designated as Crime Stoppers of El Paso, Inc. Month in El Paso County. Sign this 6th day of November, 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Or yours, Sergeant.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce a few of our members that are here with us today, including our President, Mr. Eric Zubia, our Treasurer, Ms. Emel Deloya, also one of our coordinators, Mr. John Purchase.
Welcome.
And since November of 1978, actually on November the 2nd was when members of the community got together and formed the very first Crime Stoppers of El Paso Board. And obviously, the motive behind this was to be able to help law enforcement have a way to receive anonymous information and be able to provide our community, a safer community. So obviously, the mission has continued on for 45 years. As I've been getting ready, this couple of days on Wednesday, we're going to be having a special luncheon, recognizing many of those partners, the various agencies. And it is an incredible history of the people that have been part of this board. And it is really humbling for, I know in my part, to be standing here, representing also the program as a liaison because of all the great people that have been in this program before we have. And our goal, of course, is to continue the mission here. Very first coordinator of this program and liaison was Sergeant Dwayne Johnson. And of course, he passed away here just a few months back. But that'll also be one of the individuals that will be honored in this 45th year. Important thing about it, too, is this program is the first program in the state of Texas. So the first Crime Stoppers program. Our community was the first one to create a Crime Stoppers program here in our community and the second one in the world. So again, very honored to be here, and I'll turn it over to our President if he wants to say anything.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just, on behalf of the Board of Crime Stoppers of El Paso, I just want to say thank you for all your support. Okay? Thank you.
Welcome. Any of your other guests?
I just want to thank the Commissioners for your continued support. Every year, we come to you, and you do so.
Thank you for being here.
I want to thank you for your support. Coming from the operational side, we couldn't do what we do without your support and the support of our law enforcement and community partners, so I thank you for that.
You're welcome. And Sergeant, I've got to say that the county does support Crime Stoppers. And as many of you know, I'm a retiree of the El Paso Police Department. And I remember one of those cases when I was a detective in auto burglaries. And you may think that, "Well, what's a big deal?" They broke into a car, but the victim who owns that car, that is the biggest deal that they've got. And I remember sometimes going over some of the cases. Hey, a tip came in on this case, and we were able to follow up, make an arrest, and return the property to that person. As you might think, "Well, it's only a burglary of auto, but it's the biggest case in their lives that they've... All of a sudden, now they're victims." And also, as chief, some of the cases that we handled as far as in the CHP office, big public-type murders that would be solved in a large part because of a tip that came in through those lines. And I understand, Sergeant, maybe you can fill us in a little bit more that 25% to 40%, maybe 50% of the rewards are not picked up because people simply want to do the right thing. And this is a big contributor why El Paso is so safe, so thank you.
And throughout the state, usually a good percentage of the rewards do go unclaimed. Nonetheless, there is still, of course, a large expense that is required to pay those rewards that are paid, and in addition, just to run the program, which costs approximately about $45,000 a year. And obviously, there's no salaries that's paid for that, but that's just the computer systems and other necessary tools that Crime Stoppers of El Paso, Inc. has to pay to, of course, ensure the anonymity of those members of the community that rely on Crime Stoppers as an anonymous way to report crimes and stay safe.
Congratulations. Like you said, El Paso was the first one in Texas and the second one in the U.S., so congratulations and much continued success.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item five B. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing and commending the El Pasoans who have contributed to the resilience and contributions of older persons in a changing world. Further approve and adopt the resolutions included within the backup of this item to recognize Barbara Irene Dispensa Green, Felipe de Ortega Igazca, Ruth Ray Mojica Hammer, and William Franklin Willie Quinn.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, commissioners. As we all know, we have a friend here, Alicia De Jong Davis, who's very passionate, along with other members that are joining here this morning of the Silver Hair Legislature. They're very passionate about their work, and whether it's public education or public policy, I think they're really making an impact. And today's resolution recognizes specific individuals who each have individual resolutions that are on the backup as well. I urge the public to take some time to read the incredible stories of folks like Barbara Green, Felipe de Ortega Igazca, Ruth Mojica Hammer, and William Franklin Willie Quinn. The overall resolution that I'm about to read, the first three paragraphs of reads like an archival list of El Paso treasures, and I also urge folks to take time to read the names on this resolution. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and take care of the resolution, and then we can ask our guests to speak with us. The resolution states, whereas on October second, twenty-twenty-three, El Paso County commemorated the United Nations International Day of Older Persons, UNIDOP, and recognized related global efforts such as the U.N. Principles for Older Persons of nineteen ninety-one, the Second World Assembly on Aging in two thousand and two, and the U.N. General Assembly Commission Open-Ended Working Groups on Aging, O.E.W.G.A. in two thousand and ten. And whereas the theme of the twenty-twenty-three UNIDOP observance is fulfilling the promises of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights for Older Persons across generations. And whereas the Sanctuary for Longevity Project, after a month of commemoration, proudly recognized the following older persons for a life well-lived, for successfully traversing today's global challenges and contributing to their solution with resiliency and fortitude. And this is Barbara Green, Felipe de Ortega Igazca, Ruth Mojica Hammer, and William Franklin Willie Quinn. And whereas the project further recognized and commended a number of the following AmeriCorps seniors, RSB community volunteer honorees for their years of service. Twenty-five years of service, Karen V. Kimble, Mary S. Wilk, Raffaela George; and twenty years, Connie R. Martin Karma, Lee Torres Nati, Simunios Oscar, Guillermo Álvarez, Ruben P. Martínez, and Victoria Molina.
I'll second that.
Well, let me, I'm sorry, I need to read. And then, so there's a list of names that folks can read, but the last part of the resolution says, and therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court recognizes and commends the El Pasoans who have contributed to the resilience and contributions of older persons in a changing world, signed the sixth day of November twenty-twenty-three, the Honorable County Commissioners Court.
That was too fast. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oggy.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The floor is yours.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Davy Johnson, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of many committed older people in our community. We are celebrating the continuation of the International Day of Older People, and thanks to the longevity of the people in our community who provide service and their time and talent to make our community a better place for all of us to live. And I hope that when it's your turn, you use your longevity to benefit the people of our community and the world at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner, I'm Alicia De Jong Davis, founder of the Sanctuary for Longevity Project and a Texas Silver Hair legislator, but I'm not going to talk at this point. Some of the names that we address in their resolution, many of them are living legends that they have contributed to their work to make Juarez, El Paso, a better community, and I urge people from the community to go back and get to read those names that deserve to be recognized. The Sanctuary for Longevity Projects go further and honor individuals that are no longer with us, but we want to pay tributes to their life and legacy. Some of those individuals were behind the pillars of some of our brilliant ladies that are here, and I would like for them to take a moment and acknowledge them, the name of their loved ones. Ms. Belin.
First of all, let me thank you for allowing us to address you here today. I will tell you that I was very blessed to have been married to a wonderful, great, generous person, Ramiro Robles. Ramiro and I were married for sixty-three years, and I can tell you I look back with great, great honor that I was able to raise three children, all doing wonderfully well because of the example that he gave to all of them. And so I can tell you that although he has left, believe you me, he's right next to me every moment of the day and night. So I can only say that I thank God that I was privileged to have those wonderful years that will always be with me.
Morning.
Commissioners Court, thank you so much for doing everything that you do for us. And I also want to thank Alicia De Jong Davis for always being on top of things like this for our community. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I was married to a very supporting husband who was always proud to be with me and I with him. His name, Jesús J. Fierro, who worked for the post office for forty-three years and retired at that time. We have four precious sons and who are very supportive of their mother, and I am so proud of them for being who they are, and they turned out to be. My husband was the one that always did all the, I forget the word. I created a lot of words, okay? I'm very old. But he was, he was always after them to do good, to be honest, to work hard. With hard work, you can always accomplish many things. And we were very proud of our children. We were married sixty years before he left, and I miss him every minute of my life. I thank all of you for being here, for doing everything that you do, and for many others that may not be recognized, but they have done many things for our community. I am very grateful. Thank you so much. It's great to be an American. Gracias. Thank you.
If I may, I'm going to ask my dear colleague and mentor, Davy Johnson, to take the mic again because her husband is also being honored.
Thank you once again, commissioners. My husband was Richard L. Johnson, and he served our country in the Air Force for twenty-one years. We have lived in El Paso most of the time that he served. While he went on duties beyond El Paso and the world to serve, I kept our family together. We were married fifty-one years before he left us, and we're the parents of six children, all five born here in El Paso. Thank you for this honor. Thank you.
If I may, my colleague, both of my colleagues are going to be serving as Texas Silver Hair legislators. I'm going to ask my colleague, Hilda Paesa Ortega, that she's honoring also her late husband.
Thank you, commissioners, for letting me express my gratitude for your support and everything that you do. My husband was Dr. Felipe de Ortega Igazca. He always claimed El Paso his home, even though he was not born here, but his stamp is left at UTEP because he was a professor there. He was the first director of Chicano Studies at UTEP, but also turned out to be the first one in the state. He was a very proud veteran. When he passed away almost five years ago, we were living in New Mexico, and he expressed his desire, he knew the end was coming, to be buried here in El Paso, so he is at Fort Bliss Cemetery. And as a tribute to him, our last place where we lived was in Silver City, New Mexico, where we both were affiliated with Western New Mexico University, and WNMU has created the Felipe de Ortega Institute in honor of his achievements, both academically and in social justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Another person honoring his mother is David Green.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to thank you for honoring my mother and all that she did for the community. It was very important for her to always help the elderly, the handicapped, aid in PTA with children. She loved to be an El Pasoan, and she loved to travel the country and tell everybody that she was from El Paso, and she was very proud, and all the wonderful people that she worked with, and really do appreciate addressing and honoring all these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. It is a tremendous privilege to be surrounded by these luminarias that they have contributed so much for this community. I'm also honoring on the resolution my beloved late husband. I'm not going to talk about it because I'm prejudiced. He was perfect. He was Professor Everett Edward Davis, Tim Davis. He also served the military, but he was, he was more knowledgeable. People recognized him because he was the chairman of the Educational Psychology and Guidance. He did a lot of things right, like marrying me. At this point, we were honoring this morning living legends and also legends that have left us. This morning, colleagues and friends, commissioners, it is with shock and sadness that I tell you that our friend and colleague, Texas Silver Hair legislator, Gerardo Tito Camacho, passed away this weekend. He sustained a fall. A long-standing member of TSHL, Tito continued to be involved through his, even though he had issues with his health. No arrangement had been made, but we send our prayers to his family. What I can tell you about my dear colleague, he has been serving as TSHL for seven consecutive terms. We're talking about fourteen years of his life. We were recently in Austin, and he started his eighth term, and we honor him because of his longevity. Prior to him, a couple of years ago, we lost another dear Herrera and Jada Roberts. You might know her. And I'm honored to tell you that we finally, Tito and I, were instrumental in passing her last resolution, who was increase the medical need allowance for our residents in nursing homes. And we were able to accomplish that because of what you also did, Commissioner Stout. We presented a resolution here last year, and you were so kindly to include it on the agenda. And in fact, some of the staff traveled to Austin to sponsor our resolution. Also today, I'm very glad to tell you that we just recruited three more members, and they will be taking the order of office perhaps today. One of them is Dr. Hilda Paesa Ortega and Dr. Armida Hernandez. Another colleague that was not able to be here is Ms. Emma Acosta. They are going to be joining another freshman TSHL member that we just recruited three months ago, Mary Janies and Dora Aguirre. Most of you perhaps not know, we perhaps are a best-kept secret in Texas, but TSHL actually was established in nineteen eighty-four by the sixty-ninth Texas legislator, and we had our first meeting on April of nineteen eighty-five. Since eighty-five, I can tell you there are more than seven hundred older Texans have been elected members of our body. Also, directly, we have influenced in Texas two-hundred-and-fifty bills. A lot of people don't know that. We are nonpartisan, and we are a volunteer organization. Also, we do not receive any funding for taxpayers, and up to a hundred-and-twenty-three members aged sixty may be elected, or they might be appointed to serve by the twenty-eighth Area Agency on Agents. We serve for two terms. Every two terms, we have to be elected. And now, let's make something clear. We do not make law. What we do, we research, and we recommend our advocacy to the Texas legislator. Thank you so very much for being so kind, and once again, we shall see you next year.
Is Dr. Hernandez, did she want to say a few words?
Please. I asked her. Will you please?
Good morning. My name is Armida Hernandez. I just wanted to thank the Commissioners Court for continuing to recognize and help to recognize the contributions that the older El Pasoans have made area and the county of El Paso and the whole area. Thank you.
Please indulge me. One last thing I can tell you, it has been my privilege to spend this morning It has been my privilege to spend this morning with you gentlemen, with these lovely ladies. Today happens to be my 70th birthday. So thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for spending it with you. Thank you.
But Ms. Davis, isn't there something you say when I'm 70 years old? ¿Y qué?
Exactly. So, thank you, sir. So, for the record, I'm Alicia de John Salinas Davis. Tengo 70 años. ¿Y qué? Thank you.
Commissioner?
Well, once again, thank you. Thank you so much for bringing this resolution to us and allowing us to help you recognize both those that have left and those that are still around and celebrate their longevity and make sure that we never forget the contributions that folks that are your age make. And I'm happy to come down and let's take a picture. And then, thank you very much. Really appreciate y'all's work.
Is it still too young? Dr. Eduardo Barrera. He's always helping us.
Item 5C, approve and adopt a resolution proclaiming Saturday, November 11, 2023, as a walk to end Alzheimer's Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to read the following resolution regarding a disease that unfortunately affects way too many of us. And so we hope that with this resolution, we'll be able to bring more awareness and also raise funds. So I want to thank everyone who's here from the local Alzheimer's Association. Paul, thank you so much. And I see Paul Dip is here as well. If everyone can come up to the podium while I read the resolution. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive, degenerative disease of the brain. And whereas the disease is not a normal part of aging and has no cure. And whereas currently, there are more than 6 million Americans living with Alzheimer's. And whereas 400,000 individuals in Texas have Alzheimer's disease. And whereas there are over 1 million unpaid caregivers in Texas providing over 1.7 billion hours of uncompensated care each year to people suffering from Alzheimer's. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is the leading voluntary health organization in care and support and the largest nonprofit funder of Alzheimer's research. And whereas El Paso County acknowledges and supports the mission of the Alzheimer's Association to eradicate the disease through the advancement of research, to provide care and support for all affected, and to reduce the risk of dementia through the promotion of brain health. And whereas the 2023 Walk to End Alzheimer's will take place at the El Paso Zoo on Saturday, November 11, 2023. And all of El Paso is invited to participate with the goal of bringing awareness to the community and raising funds for this very important research. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 11, 2023, as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day. In official recognition thereof, the Commissioners of the Court and the County Judge hereby affix their signatures on this sixth day of November, 2023, in El Paso County, Texas.
Second.
Commissioner Holguin.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Paul, go ahead, please.
Good morning. My name's Paul Ferris. I'm the Development Manager for the Alzheimer's Association. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you, Commissioners, for honoring us today. A special thank you to Commissioner Holguin for her support. She sits on our Walk to End Alzheimer's Committee as well. Many thanks to those behind me who are volunteers for the committee and the event itself. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our event chair to say a few words about the event. Thanks.
Morning, everybody. Jake Boggs, Event Chair for the Alzheimer's Walk. We will be hosting it at the zoo this Saturday, 9:00 a.m. So please come, please sign up online if you like. It doesn't cost any money, but please, you're welcome to join us. It should be a very fun event, as it is in El Paso this year opposed to New Mexico the previous few years. So family fun event. Come and support us and raise money for the Alzheimer's Association as well as the zoo. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Wonderful to see you all again. Alzheimer's is a devastating disease that impacts El Paso. We're number 10 in the country, unfortunately. It's a combination of our heritage, directly linked to the Hispanic population. It's a byproduct of diabetes and heart disease and nutrition. This is a volatile storm. This is something that can no longer be ignored. It has to be elevated. And these young guns behind me are out to do it. So these are our requests. Please, thank you so much for your support and recognition today. We'd be so grateful for a social post on your social media advertising the walk. We appreciate all the audience doing the same on their social media. We need 1,200 people Saturday. The goal is 1,000. We're not quite there. We need a much larger crowd. And if everybody in this room will go to the Alzheimer's site or post on their social media or whatever support you need, I know that Mr. Ferris and his team have got plenty of resources for you at the Alzheimer's Association. They will get you and your team within the county to participate in that way to spread the word. We need awareness. We need support. We need bodies on Saturday. We need donations. You know, in my business capacity, I'm never afraid. I can hardly get off the podium without the ask. And we very much support and appreciate everybody in the room. This touches literally every family that I've ever spoken to. I was very naive in my complete understanding of the scope and the issues connected to this devastating disease until I had the privilege to work with such exceptional people. So thank you very much, Commissioner Holguin. Always a blessing to work with you. Thank you for participating so completely. Thank you for carving out time and rushing to our luncheon between seven things you had to do that day. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Rodriguez with the Sheriff's Office. Alzheimer's affected my family with my grandfather. And so becoming a part of this board and this committee was, you know, an easy yes for me and to bring on board the office. As we work towards responding to not just Alzheimer's, but all mental health-related issues within our community, we are proud to be a partner in this, and I'm proud to be a volunteer partner. So thank you very much for your resolution. Thank you, Commissioner.
Tony Rodriguez with the Sports Commission. Good morning, Commissioners. It's great to be a part of this event. I was asked late last year to be a part of it. Kind of naive, too, like they were just talking about. And little did I know that I would lose my grandfather in August to Alzheimer's. So it means a lot more now. And be walking in his honor and advocate the community because you never know, someone in your family or someone you know gets affected by this disease, and it's pretty rough. But thank you all for taking the time.
Commissioners, Patrick Williams. I'm with New York Life. Happy to be part of the team this year and part of the committee as well and do everything we can to make awareness and also donations. Like Tony was hitting on, it's affected my family, too. My wife's grandfather dealt with the same loss this past year, too. So I think it affects us all in some way, but happy to be part of the committee, and thank you all.
Thank you all so much. In closing, I'd like to state that El Paso, in a recent study, has ranked 10th in the country as a county for those that are affected by Alzheimer's and dementia, 65 years and older. So it's here. It's home. It's in El Paso. We need your support. Please come out on Saturday. If you can't make it out on Saturday, feel free to contact the office, and we'll get you involved in any way we can. We do have a 24/7 hotline for those who are looking for resources, and I can gladly provide that after the meeting. So again, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Holguin, for your continued support. And we look forward to seeing you all on Saturday.
And thank you, Paul. Thank all of you for everything that you've done. I think the walk on Saturday is going to be incredibly successful. I want to thank all of our county staff who have already signed up. But if you haven't signed up and you would still like to sign up, it's not too late. If anyone needs help signing up, please come see me in my office, and we'd be glad to help you sign up. So thank you all. And if y'all can come up, we'd take a photo. We'd like to take a photo with you all.
Jessica, can we go into the items that were pulled from consent?
Yes, sir.
There, I know there's some people here to address them.
Item 4R. Item 4R, rescind the Commissioners' Court Order of September 11, 2023, item number 15 on the regular agenda, to approve and authorize the County Judge to sign the supplemental contract between owner and contractor with Sound and Signal Systems of Texas for the fire alarm modernization of the jail annex in the amount of $1,795,792.71. Funding is available in CPTN 23B Jail Renovation Fire Alarm, contract number 20230619. Further, approve and authorize the County Judge to sign the corrected supplemental contract between owner and contractor with Sound and Signal Systems of Texas for the fire alarm modernization of the jail annex, which revises the days of completion from 65 days to 365 due to manufacturer delays in the amount of $1,795,792.71. Funding is available in CPTN 23B Jail Renovation Fire Alarm, contract number 20230823.
Thank you, Vanessa. Mr. Sully, the reason I pulled that one is not so much the amount, but the days increased from 65 days to 365. I know there is a supply problem, but is it that severe? Where it went from all over two months?
I'm sorry, someone speaking?
Mr. Sully, the question is, was this a change from 65 to 365 due to some kind of error? Or is this, why did it go out so many days?
Yes, it was due to an error from 65 to 365 days, and we caught that error. That's why we were asking the County Judge to re-sign.
So it was supposed to be 365 from the very beginning?
Yes.
They just made a typo and forgot to include the three. It was originally, the contract was 365 days for the entire project.
Okay. Well, thank you. It just cut my eye. I mean, that's a huge difference. Is that also because of the supply issues?
Yes, Commissioner.
It is. Okay. I'll move to approve.
Commissioner Holguin.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 4W, with the correction from the County Attorney's Office, approve and authorize the County Judge to sign the agreement regarding mutual cooperation with the El Paso Community Foundation to assist in providing programs and other support for the El Paso Sheriff's Office for a three-year term with options to renew for additional three-year terms. Further, authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to accept monetary and in-kind donations from the El Paso Community Foundation during the term of the agreement for the funding of community programs, employee morale initiatives, and other support of the Sheriff's Office pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 81.032, contract number 20230912.
Thank you. And I pulled this not necessarily because I've got a question, because I want to highlight. And I think, Vanessa, did you come to speak on that? Sheriff, I hadn't noticed you down there, but you like it that way.
Sorry, that was me pointing you out.
Yeah. But, you know, these kind of issues, I think they're important for the public to understand and realize that this goes a long way in the morale of the whole chain, whether you're talking about dispatchers or the person detaining some of these individuals or out in the field. So Sheriff, or Vanessa, the floor is yours.
Yes.
So you're well aware, we have the Sheriff's Foundation that's done a great job to help support the efforts of our agency and also to support its members. And we do a lot of events that really gain a lot of community attention and help ensure that we're developing partnerships. I think the Sheriff's Office has a great idea of community policing and how we want to continue that. So in discussions with Vanessa, when she came on board, she mentioned about the Community Foundation and about how we can expand the ability of getting our information out to the community through their many efforts that they have on their webpage and social media. So that's the reason that we decided to enter into an agreement, or hopefully that you all will approve that, so that we can kind of work together and just really expand the things that we're doing in the community. Eric Pearson was supposed to be here, too.
So apologies. Mr. Pearson is on his way. He'll be here. If I can see him. But it really is, it's really aligning ourselves and helping to bring together people that share the same appreciation and commitment to community. So that's why this really made a lot of sense because...
When we come together in a common vision and purpose, we can do so much more than if we try to do it individually. And I think it's something that we all can appreciate, is that collaboration and it's very much in alignment with what the county, the vision, what the county stands for also, is coming together as a people for a common goal.
And there is a saying, the community is the police, the police is the community. So, thank you all for being here and it just goes a long way for the morale of all the groups involved. Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Commissioner Holguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Motion carries. And item 4X, grant award, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Department of Homeland Security FY22 Operation Stone Garden Grant Award in the amount of $32,998 awarded to Constable Precinct Four from March 1, 2023 through February 29, 2024. No county match required. Contract Number 2023-0906.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Letizia Vizcaino with Grants Department. This is a grant that, from the Governor's Office and the amount of $32,998. This is the first time that Precinct Four has been included in the Stone Garden grant and efforts. The grant funding is strictly overtime. Here with me is Deputy Casas for Precinct Four to speak further and answer any other questions.
Commissioner Stout?
Yeah, I pulled this item because when it was first brought up a number of months ago, I voted against it. I'm just really worried, first of all, about local law enforcement getting involved in enforcing, in border enforcement and working, doing things with the Border Patrol and getting involved in immigration-related enforcement. And I also just have philosophically, I think, over the years, talked about the fact that I think constables' offices should stick to their statutory requirements when it comes to their duties, which is serving the JPs, being a bailiff, serving papers and those types of things. And I think that it creates a liability for constables' offices in the county to beginning, getting involved in other types of activities that really aren't the statutory required activities. So, I just wanted to pull the item because I'm sure the rest of the court will probably support it, but I want to be on the record as voting no, so.
Deputy, you want to describe this grant?
Yes, sir. So, just the same as I had discussed in the previous when it was approved, the, our job out there is to enforce only state law. We do not enforce any immigration law whatsoever. It's more an effort to assist in active patrol in the areas that are hotspots for them, but it's not to enforce any immigration laws whatsoever.
Commissioners? I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner, I was just gonna ask, so what is the overtime used for?
In regards to the Stone Garden, it's just active patrol in the areas. We do traffic control in the areas, just a high visibility, trying to deter anything that's happening there in the areas and the communities along the border.
We have one motion, Jessica. Second.
Commissioner Holguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
No.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
And Judge Tommenegos absent, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the regular order, item number six is public comment. We do have several speakers for public comment. Our first speaker, we have Ms. Elizabeth Crawford.
We don't have Elizabeth Crawford, we lost her networking here. Standby.
Do we have Alondra Miranda here? Go ahead.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioner Leon. So, I'm up here asking for your help and support in something.
I live out in the area of Square Dance, near Flagler, that area. And unfortunately, I have some very irresponsible pet owners. Yesterday, I picked up seven pups that this owner let loose on the street of Square Dance. And when I called County Animal Control, I was being accused of stealing them from his property. And I asked the deputy out there, you can go confirm from my neighbor that I did not steal them, and she did. The owner pretty much said she can keep them and do whatever she wants with them. And so, at that point, I asked her, okay, now that they're in my custody, what are my options, you know, to get these dogs off the street and adopted and healthy? And she said, I cannot offer you any assistance. We are full, we're at capacity, you have to handle it on your own and, you know, look out for a rescue that can help you out. At that point, I, or she said, you can surrender them to Animal Services. I called Animal Services, I coordinated a pickup with them and I was being accused of abandonment. So, he took my information to charge me with abandonment. And I said, if you're gonna charge me, then give me back the dogs and I'll see what I do with them. But, I'm just here very frustrated because there is no help or support out there in our community and as someone who was trying to do the right thing for these pups, you know what I mean, the laws and procedures out there did not go in my favor. And I'm just very upset and distraught that to blame was that negligent and irresponsible person, not me picking up those puppies off the street. So, I just hope that with this comment, I can coordinate with any or all of you to help me improve our community and the procedures and laws out there, because now I'm, you know, stuck with 10 puppies at my house, three of my own and seven that are not mine. And I told the officer, that dog of his gets pregnant every six months because his stray dog goes into his property. So, I will have this issue again in the next few months. And again, I am left with no support or assistance from any programs to do the right thing here for them. So, that's all I have to say and I hope that I can coordinate with, like I said, at least my Commissioner Leon or all of you in this, in making just the procedures, laws better for us out there.
Well, thank you very much. You may not know that really during public comment, we are not supposed to engage with you.
I understand.
But nevertheless, you were out at our Square Dance meeting Saturday and I know you're a pet lover, because you had a beautiful dog there with you that really liked me.
And we're excited about the park, so.
And so, good things are happening and we are very engaged in the complaint. I spoke to Carl this morning, so it'll be going through the proper channels. Betsy will begin with your office to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
But again, thank you, number one, for being at that meeting. You care about your area. And number two, we don't have all the facts right now, so.
No, I understand.
If it's like you explained, let me be the first to apologize for that behavior and thank you for caring for those creatures that are out there.
Thank you. I hope I can get a possible solution to what's going out there. So, this is all I wanted to say and I hope that we can work towards making this improvement.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Commissioner Leon, I know you all can't engage, but we, Joel is here, we are going to speak with her and get the information and address these concerns immediately.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker, we do have Ms. Elizabeth Crawford back on the phone.
Ms. Crawford, can you hear us?
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Good morning, Ms. Crawford.
Okay, good morning. Thank you so much. Good morning. In November, there's a day designated as International Day to honor and remember the persecuted church worldwide. It's a day of prayer. I would like to speak briefly about something that has implications for us as well. I would like to speak about the biography of a couple, Richard and Sabina, a Romanian couple. I would like to read first God's Word, Matthew 10, 32 and 33. Jesus said, whoever shall confess to me before men, him will I confess also before my Father, who is in heaven. But whosoever shall deny me before men, him will I also deny before my Father, who is in heaven. Richard was a young man, he was Jewish, he was an atheist in Romania in the early 1900s and 1930s. God orchestrated a string of events in his life and he came to believe that Jesus is indeed the Jewish Messiah. In New Jersey, I was part of a Messianic, a Jewish Messianic congregation that had ties to this couple while they were still living. In the 1940s in Romania, there was vicious antisemitism. It was the time of the Nazis in power in Germany. And during the 1940s, Richard reached out to the Jewish children in the ghettos of Romania and sought to minister to them. The Nazi influence in Romania was followed by the communist takeover. Most of us are familiar with the name Ceaușteau. I believe he came later. But in the 1940s, communists had come in. Richard sought to reach out to the Russian soldiers who were there. 1945, there is a Congress of religious leaders led by the Communist Party, about 4,000 religious leaders there. The goal was to get the pastors to swear allegiance to the atheistic regime. Pastor after pastor stood up and gave lip service to the Communist Party. They were forsaking their alleged faith in Christ. Richard and Sabina were sitting in this conference. Sabina motioned to her husband and said, stand up and wash away the shame from the face of Christ. Knowing the cost, Richard stood up and declared to all that their duty was to glorify God and to glorify Christ and not to bow to people. Consequently, Richard was kidnapped by secret police, spent 14 years in prison, horrific torture, brutality, solitary confinement, but he considered it an honor to suffer for righteousness. In 1965, he was ransomed for $10,000, I believe it was from Norway, Christians from Norway. 1966, he testified before the US Senate about the conditions in communist prisons and he subsequently started an international outreach to persecuted Christians in the iron, under the Iron Curtain and in the Muslim world. Why does this matter? The persecuted church for many years was way out there, but in terms of location, but in recent years, it's grown much, much closer to home. In the UK and Canada, Christians are being jailed for stating what the Bible says in the public square. In our nation, it's started reference to hate speech for, in certain cases, simply quoting what the Bible itself says about truth. We're told in God's Word, Jesus said, and you shall be hated of all for my name's sake, that he that endures to the end shall be saved. Fear them not therefore, for there is nothing covered that shall not be revealed and hidden that shall not be known. In our day, its persecution is possibly right around the corner, but the Lord Jesus Christ is worth standing for. His truth is unchanging. Jesus is not progressive over time. Jesus Christ is the same yesterday, today and forever. Thank you so much. Hope you all have a good day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our final speakers, we have Ms. Betsy Keller and Lorena Rodriguez from the County Administration Department.
Good afternoon, or good morning Commissioners. Betsy Keller, County Administrator. We wanted to take just a moment to recognize the events that will be happening this Friday and Saturday in recognition of Veterans Day. The county has taken a lead in sponsoring some of these events, so I wanted to ask Lorena to go over the events that are happening just for the public's awareness.
Good morning Commissioners, Lorena Rodriguez, County Administration. So, the events will begin on Friday, November 10 at 8:00 AM, Fabens Veteran Park Committee. They will be holding their veterans, their Fabens Veterans Celebration at Fabens Veterans Park. Their keynote speaker will be Colonel Kirby Bowdenis. Also on Friday, November 10 at 10:00 AM, the Flags Across America Organization will hold their Northeast Veterans Day Parade. Their route will begin on Hondo Pass and end on Diana. Following the Veterans Parade, they will hold their Veterans Day Ceremony, the Glory Memorial. And then on Saturday, November 11 at 9:00 AM, the San Elizario Veterans Committee will hold their 27th Annual Veterans Parade and Ceremony. Their route for their parade is Thompson Road East to the Veterans Memorial Plaza. And our very own Commissioner Holguin will be the Grand Marshal for that parade.
All right.
Also on Saturday, November 11 at 11:00 AM, the United American Veterans Organization will be holding their Downtown Veterans Day Parade and that route will be, began on Myrtle and Florence and end on the Texas, Texas and Florence. So, as El Paso County, we commend these organizations who salute the many veterans who have proudly served and called El Paso County home. With all these organizations holding these events, El Paso County is excited to build better partnerships with these organizations to celebrate our veterans.
Thank you Lorena. Betsy, any more information? Commissioners? Congratulations to our own Iliana Holguin being the Grand Marshal. So, thank you for representing us.
And actually, if I could just add one more, it's not necessarily sponsored by the county, but the veterans in Clint, who are also a very, very active veteran community, they are having their celebration at 11:00 AM on Saturday. So, San Eli veterans will have theirs at 9:00 AM and then everyone can head over to Clint at 11:00 AM for their celebration.
Thank you.
And we do have one more speaker for public comment, Mr. Roberto Ransom.
Commissioners, one more, if you don't mind, for the record, Roberto Ransom, Director, El Paso County Economic Development Department. And I'm very pleased today to share with you that we have Mariana Barrasa on board for the last two weeks. She brings a wealth of knowledge, dedication and expertise in binational affairs. Binational affairs in economic development, tourism, as well as heritage, which is kind of hard to possess in one, in one person. And I truly think that is, it takes a very well-rounded individual to represent the affairs, the binational affairs of the county, not only in the Paso Norte region, but also in other states in Mexico like Monterrey, Guadalajara, Mexico City, where Mariana not only knows our counterpart in economic development, but she has government ties, I mean, and connections over there. So, with that, Mariana wanted to address the court and I'll let her say, I mean, address the court. Yes, go ahead, Mariana.
Roberto, good morning Commissioners. I am deeply honored to stand before you today. In my previous role, I had the privilege of serving as a So San Eli veterans will have theirs at 9:00 a.m., and then everyone can head over to Clint at 11:00 a.m. for their celebration.
Thank you.
And we do have one more speaker for public comment, Mr. Roberto Ransom.
Commissioners, one more, if you don't mind, for the record. Roberto Ransom, Director, El Paso County Economic Development Department. And I'm very pleased today to share with you that we have Mariana Barrasa on board for the last two weeks. She brings a wealth of knowledge, dedication, and expertise in bi-national affairs. Bi-national affairs in economic development, tourism, as well as heritage, which is kind of hard to possess in one, in one person. And I truly think that is, it takes a very well-rounded individual to represent the affairs, the bi-national affairs of the county, not only in the Paso del Norte region, but also in other states in Mexico, like Monterrey, Guadalajara, Mexico City, where Mariana not only knows our counterpart in economic development, but she has government ties, I mean, and connections over there. So with that, Mariana wanted to address the court, and I'll let her say, I mean, address the court. Yes, go ahead, Mariana.
Roberto, good morning, Commissioners. I am deeply honored to stand before you today. In my previous role, I had the privilege of serving as a diplomatic officer of Mexico's foreign affairs at the Consulate General of Mexico here in El Paso for over six years. During my career, I have witnessed firsthand the immense power of policy, diplomacy, and collaboration in fostering robust connections between the Paso del Norte region comprised of two nations and three states. Today, as the head of bi-national affairs for our county, I am not just stepping into a role. I am stepping into a commitment, a commitment to fostering stronger ties between El Paso County and our neighbors across the border. My vision is clear. I am here to promote economic growth, facilitate enriching cultural exchanges, and facilitate effective collaboration within the vibrant Paso del Norte region and our Mexican counterparts. I welcome this opportunity to embrace the county's bicultural identity by transforming county government affairs into a modern engine of competence driven by mutual respect and understanding. With determination and enthusiasm, I will continue to work hand in hand for the betterment of El Paso County and for, and the flourishing bi-national region we call our home. Thank you.
Well, Mariana, thank you very much, and welcome to the great El Paso County family. And as the court will agree with me, I mean, Mexico is such a huge part of the El Paso economy. So we've got a lot of work to do in making this even a greater region. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto.
Thank you.
Item number seven, presentation 7A.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, Commissioner.
I just wanted to make one announcement. This Saturday, we're proud to be, in Canutillo, there will be a grand opening for a brand-new brewery in El Paso County, and that's called the Downrange Brewery, and it'll be in downtown Canutillo. The celebration for the grand opening will start at 12:00 noon, right downtown Canutillo.
Congratulations.
We're really happy to have a new brewery.
That is the backbone of our region here, those small businesses.
Yes, they are.
Item seven, presentation 7A, receive a presentation and discuss the monthly report from the Council of Judges.
Greetings, Commissioners. Chief County Administrator, thank you for taking a few minutes of time to hear from the Council of Judges Administration. I'm Michael Cacaro, the Executive Director. First, I'd like to congratulate the County Judge Sominiego and the entire county on the successful State of the County address last week. It was a wonderful chance to look back at how our county family positively affects the lives of El Pasoans and visitors to our community on the border. The courts were pleased last week to open up to the community with 18 court and judicial agency locations, handing out candy as part of the trick-or-treating event at the courthouse. We all enjoyed being a part of the fun, even as our courts continued their work dispensing justice. That was a lot of fun stuff. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the work that we've been doing lately. I don't think it's any surprise that we've seen an uptick, not just in cases filed. The courthouse is busier, and along with that comes trials. There's a lot of serious trials where we're seeing jurors and people coming into the courthouse. This is something that we're aware of. We've seen some changes that we made during COVID, seeing unintended consequences of those. So we are taking a look at different jury management plans, some solutions to improve the overall juror experience. Wanted to let you know about that, and we look forward to working with the District Clerk's Office on that. Late last month, the Council of Judges submitted its indigent, updated indigent defense plan to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. Among the changes, the judges have requested a $10 an hour increase in the hourly rates for the private attorneys who take indigent cases. Since COVID, we've seen roughly a 50% decrease in the number of attorneys taking appointed cases. And these cases make up really about 90%, 88, 90% of the people who are booked into the jail need financial assistance or need an attorney appointed. We believe that we can contain this increase within the 2020 budget. The hourly rate increase is supposed to start January 1st of this year, and, but we will continue to monitor that with our Budget Office. We'd like to talk about a couple of court improvements that we've been working on, some for a number of years. The most important is our access controls project, which has provided an immediate improvement to the safety and work environment for many courts and staff. The picture above is from in front of one of the doors where people can select the court that they're trying to access, press the button, and the court, court personnel will respond by looking through the camera and allowing those people entrance. There are also badge readers on those access controls for people who have permissions, like facilities or bailiffs or courthouse security to enter those court areas. These controls have reduced traffic in hallways behind the middle courtrooms and the south side court chambers. And we also have these at the entry doorways to other court chambers on the north side. The courts are not just relying, though, on technology to improve safety, as the courthouse security committee and the Council of Judges Administration have made significant strides in the training and certification of our court bailiffs over the last year. Also, next slide, please. The courts are currently receiving new jury chairs to replace the aging chairs that are worn and in some cases unsafe. You'll see a picture of, on the left, some of our older chairs versus the type of chairs we're installing now. This is moving along and should be finished by the end of this month. After that, we will be replacing audio systems in 17 more courtrooms to complete a project we began in 2021. The purpose of the audio improvements is to improve the sound and the reliability of the equipment, which in turn, we expect will reduce delays. We'd like to thank the Budget Office this year for helping us find the funding for these projects, which will benefit the courts for years to come. I'd also like to thank you for approving our funding and making it possible to move forward to provide workable courtrooms and a safer environment for our judges and staff. It's imperative that the courts have the tools they need to resolve cases in an environment that engenders respect and removes technical impediments. To wrap up, I'd like to say I'm very pleased we have two items following on the agenda that are good news for our courts involving behavioral health in our efforts to strengthen our resolve to improve the way the courts administer their side of behavioral health. And finally, I would like to wish everyone, especially the veterans, a happy Veterans Day. That concludes my presentation, and unless there are any questions.
Cora, thank you. And, you know, people don't realize that there's about 36 courts above us. So it's quite an undertaking, and a lot of folks coming up and down those elevators to visit those courts. Commissioner, did you have, Commissioner Coronel?
Thank you, Chief Leon. I just want to let you know that I know that a lot of the judges have reached out to me regarding some of the issues with our enterprise system. And I met with the county attorney's office last week. I just want to let you all know, to let the courts know that, that the court is looking at those issues with respect to that contract, because in the past, there wasn't really any teeth to it. And so the new contract, I'm glad that the county attorney's office is looking to some of those issues where we can expect consequences on behalf of Tyler if our system is down because of some of the errors that are caused by them, certain delays. I know they have some exceptions to that, but I want to commend the county attorney's office for looking into those. So we met with them last week, and I think it's going to be a lot better going forward, so.
I appreciate that. I want to, I want to do commend, I would like to commend ITD. They have made some improvements in terms of using our network to connect to the Tyler system. Recently completed a software-as-a-service agreement with Tyler for Enterprise Justice, which I think will improve the quality of service from them. And again, it does have the teeth that you described, which we greatly appreciate. But we also look forward to continuing to work with the implementation and the upgrade to Enterprise Justice 2023, which will provide us some of the new, more cutting-edge opportunities in terms of case management and the way it facilitates information sharing between all of the members of the justice community, from jail manager to case manager, and all the people who have their own part to play in our justice system. So, but I, we really appreciate your interest, and I hope it's continuing interest, because we will need your help and input as we continue.
Yes. And along those lines, one other, some of the courts have reached out to me regarding some of the issues in being able to lock the doors with respect to, from the courtroom out to their area. I don't know if y'all can, if Betsy, y'all can maybe take a look at those issues about changing the door locks that be able to be locked from the outside area where, to the courtroom, where something happens in the court that can escape that, say, they're not able at this time to lock them from the outside where the secretarial, or should I speak, the management area of the court is. And I'm particular, Probate Court Number Two has reached out to me about those issues, so.
In fact, I know Probate One has already put in a request to have that switched. We are recommending that all courts, when court is not in session, keep their exterior doors locked, which would limit the possibility of somebody entering that way. But, you know, it's, I wish there was a standard configuration for courtrooms, but there's not. We've, we've.
Yeah, there's, there's many differences.
We fix problems as they arrive to us. But, you know, we, we can, I think, take an inventory of courts that have that issue and solve that holistically, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, some of those seemingly small things can become huge. So appreciate your, your efforts in that area. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We, it's, the access controls was a very large change, and now we're trying to make it incrementally better every day. And it's things like that that will make it better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight from the regular agenda, receive a presentation from the El Paso Sports Commission regarding its quarterly status report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melissa Carillo with County Operations. This morning, as we do every quarter, we have Mr. Omar Ropel and his team ready to present the quarterly update, closing out FY '23. And this morning, they'll be introducing a new member of their team, Ms. Thea Chambers. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ropel.
Thank you, Melissa. Good morning, everybody. Omar Ropel with the El Paso Sports Commission. And this is to present the fiscal year that just, that just ended, July, August, and September. On the venue management side, we finished the fence from the corner of Paisano and Shelter all the way to where the gate is to go into, into the event center. It's finally finished. That is, that is an old picture. But now, if you go in, we finally finished. It took us around 15 months, but little by little, we were there. And now, our next, our next issue is going to be on the Delta Street. We're going to start little by little, also continuing with, with that.
And thank you, Omar. I know I brought it up a long time ago. And, you know, the Coliseum is such a beautiful venue that is, in my opinion, marred by a chain link, but it does look 100% better. Thank you for listening to us.
Oh, no, you're welcome, Commissioner. And we actually did a couple of gates since we were there that is helping us for when we have a full lot of parking, it makes the grass go, go faster. Little side note, we were doing immigration naturalization services one time, and one of the, one of the patrons was getting his citizenship, and he was coming a little bit late. So he was coming on Paisano and decided to do a U-turn, hits a truck, and the truck gets into the fence. So it was, it was on Paisano's side, so we created another gate instead of building the fence back again. And that helps also to get, to get people out on the Paisano side. And that avoids the entry of the patrons walking, pedestrians, for whoever parks on the street or parks on the zoo and everything. So that's, that's also another gate that we also did, by the way. But now we're going to continue on the Delta side. That is, that is a kind of old picture, a weird picture. But that, that is a company that power washed the entrance. It's Cantera stone on the entrance, and it was a lot of pigeons and everything. So we put some spikes so the pigeons don't be there, and we power wash all of the bird poop in there. So the entrance is also more appealing, and it's to try to rejuvenate the, it's Cantera stone. I can't, I don't know the name of the, of Cantera in English. I'm sorry. Quarry? I think it's quarry stone. I believe so. But it's, it's a really nice entrance, so we're going to be doing that. And that's like one of the first phases that we want to do, because going forward, we want to replace the metal doors on the entrance with some nice glass doors and put double, so we have a buffer in between. That way, the cold air stays cold. Because when we open the doors right now, it just, you know, the AC goes out, or in, in the winter, the, the heat goes out. If we have double doors, we have a little buffer there of air. That way, it doesn't get cold in the winter and it doesn't get hot in the summer. That is the old Sherman barn, and when, when we had this past wind, it kind of collapsed. So we built this new, this new door, metal, completely new. And it was very difficult to open it for our, for our staff, security and maintenance people. You really needed like a forklift to open it and everything. So now we fabricate that one, and that one's really easy to roll in and roll out. That's, we're using that barn for now to, to store big, heavy equipment like forklifts, welders, and, and stuff like that. So it's, it's very practical to have those as well, and we did it. On the event center, the Rhinos installed a new hockey scoreboard, which I hope some of you have seen it already. It's state-of-the-art. And we already talked to that company, and they, they did an estimate. So we can also use that same company to do the big marquee for the Coliseum. And they gave us a really good price. I put it into the CIP. It's about $210,000, which is, and that's, that's all, removing the existing one and building the new one using the new bones. So let's, let's see what happens. On the event side, I'm going to let Tony Rodriguez, Director of Events, talk to you about very productive end of, end of fiscal year that, that we had. We.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tony Rodriguez, Director of Events for the Sports Commission. Started, kept, started in July with our fiscal, as the fiscal year, we had Ricardo Arjona. Big Latin artist came, big production, too. The stage was awesome. So we had about 870 tickets sold outside of El Paso. He used to have a big production, and then, of course, his team staying here in El Paso. One of the things that I, and I mentioned to a couple of you that I would definitely want to put in there is how many jobs this creates, because it goes from ushers, ticket takers, barricade, people at the barricade, off-duty officers, concessions. We also have medics on duty and the production, local production that actually helps put the lights and everything. And so for that one, there was a total of about 187 jobs for that. And these are high school, college kids just looking for the extra money, part-time, and it's, it's more than four hours. I mean, they're there sometimes from the morning all the way to night with us working, and so it's, it's, it's good for you, and they, and they enjoy it. Continuing with our community involvement, the El Paso Health Backpack Giveaway. Definitely, we did that every year. They do food and backpacks for families in El Paso. That also requires staffing, too, especially when it's trying to get cars in and out. So we had a total of 18 people that we, we hired for that. The SISD convocation, brought their convocation to the County Coliseum in July. And that was a total of 29 jobs there from security, off-duty officers, medics, and all that. One of the big artists that we kicked off July, towards the end, and to, we get to the other ones, is Santa Peclan. Santa Peclan was recently walking Canelo to the, to the ring for his latest fight. So we were able to have him at the Coliseum before that. You have 838 tickets sold outside of El Paso. Definitely brought a, brought a team with him, and so you see the rooms there. And for that concert, we had 157 jobs for that one. Summer Gen, this was one of my favorites, because it had Ja Rule and Ashanti, so teamed up with Power One O'Two. And so that was about 357 tickets outside of El Paso. And as far as jobs, that was about 113 jobs for that one. Pesto Pluma, we get into the, one of the biggest artists right now. Did two nights in El Paso, about 6,500. Did two nights in El Paso, about 6, 6,500 each night, sold out both nights. Tickets sold outside of El Paso, you see that, it's 5,431 people that came to see Peso Pluma, either on a Friday or Saturday, so pretty big to have Peso Pluma. For that one, we hired about 267 people. Again, that's all for concessions, opening the other side of the, of the Coliseum, which we use the west side now off of Boone when we have a sold-out concert, because people park at the zoo, cross over, and it just helps get everybody in and out, especially when you have so many people. My favorite, too, Incubus, but also with Paris Jackson. As you all know, her father was with the Jackson Five, and they came here to El Paso County Coliseum. Total tickets sold outside was about 747. One of the cool notes, I was telling, one of the reporters there that came to cover the concert, is that when she got there, she walked around, went to go eat in catering, and then got some donuts from catering, and then she walked around the Coliseum handing donuts to staff. Very friendly, very polite, I mean, and it was just awesome to see Paris Jackson in the El Paso County Coliseum. For those jobs is about 140. We have the County Employees Veteran Luncheon that we all do there. That was about 15 jobs there that we from, we had from ushers, off-duty officers, the production to get the screen and, and all that. Then we got the circus. We had the circus for a couple days, about 80 jobs from, from that. Matute, Latin band, so tickets sold outside of El Paso, about 189, and then you got the rooms occupied by their production and, and staff there. And for that one, it's about 115 jobs there. Again, with our community involvement, did the Make-A-Wish Foundation there. We did that in the VIP room, so that was a great event for us to be a part of, and for you all to come and, and want to do it there. County Fair and Gala, always fun. We turned the pavilion into barn, throw the dirt in there, and then at night, we come into the Coliseum, and you have a nice event. And so that was about 14 jobs there for that event. And then County Employees Picnic, that was good. I'm also happy you guys ended on time around four o'clock, because then I left to Phoenix to watch the Cowboys get destroyed by the Cardinals, but, but I always had fun on that. County Picnic's always fun. And then we ended it for the fiscal year with Sin Badera, great Latin artist group as well, about 192 tickets sold outside of El Paso, and then about 133 jobs. As we look in, we'll present more numbers in our next one quarterly for the October events, but October was a beast. We were busy. We had Disney on Ice from the 4th to the 7th. I think it was five days and 10 shows. Alejandro signs right afterwards, Carlos Ribeira the next day. And one day, when people talk about an event center, I know it's been talked about in Sunland Park, like I tell people, and I was asked about it, the Coliseum has their own event center already. We can do different events at one time, and it just shows. We had a Halloween market in the pavilion on the 14th. We had the UMC Foundation car seat check that they did right in front of the Coliseum, and we had, we had public ice skating, all at the same time. Then we had Rhinos at night, so definitely events for the whole family to come participate in. Did the naturalization ceremony on the 19th. Lupita had her final concert on the 21st here at the Coliseum. We teamed up with Fort Bliss. They wanted to do a training exercise in our building, so they occupied that from the 22nd to the 24th, so we did some overnight cleaning, so they could come at 6:00 in the morning Sunday and take our building over. And then we had four concerts in a row just recently, the Rock Resurrection Tour, Grupo Frontera, which sold out completely. Then we have Mike Towers the next day, and then Manuel Turiso, the last one, so we were kind of exhausted after that, but definitely fun. Busy is good. One of the things I was challenged by Dr. Renteria from Commissioner's office was checking out the Grand Ole Opry and seeing what we can do there at the Coliseum, and try and make it a museum. And so that's in some of our plans to do, but we started that off with just getting the band to sign stuff, very easy. So we started with Sin Badera, they signed the poster for us. We had Lupita sign one of her vinyl albums back in the day, and then Grupo Frontera signed a shirt and a, and a cowboy hat, so it was definitely stuff that we definitely want to display when we do more tours there at the County Coliseum. Omar can handle the numbers. Not my thing.
That comparison with the last fiscal year, and honestly, we, we blew it out of the water. In 2022, we did a little bit over 800,000, 800, almost $815,000, and this last year, it was $1.1 million. It's a new record in the history of the sports tourism, and now we're scratching our heads to see how we're going to do the same this year or surpass it. Now we set up the bar really high, and we got lucky with, with some, some shows like Grupo Fideme coming in. They just decided to retire. Peso Pluma, when we got Peso Pluma, he was doing theaters, and which approached the promoter and says, you know what, we're going to give you opportunity to grow. What if he grows? And when he came to the Coliseum, he was already ready to do stadiums. So Peso Pluma's not coming next year to the, to the Coliseum. He's, he's very big, but we're, we're looking for that next big star that can, that can explode again. Grupo Frontera was one of the other ones as well, that, that they're doing really, really good. So 1.1 million in, in, in this, in this fiscal year, something to brag about. Sports Tourism Division, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Thea Chambers. She is what I consider the mother of sports tourism in El Paso. She, almost 20 years ago, she actually started the Sports Tourism Department at the El Paso Sports Commission, when nobody knew exactly what sports tourism was, and she created it, she developed it, she made it grow, and because of personal issues, she needed to leave around seven years ago, and she actually never left, left. She was still part of it, but now, thank God, she's ready to, to continue full-time helping us. I don't know if you would like to say a few words?
Howdy. Good morning, Commissioners. I, probably the first thing I want to say is, I want to applaud you for appreciating the value of sports tourism and of having a sports commission. Not every city is able to recognize that. We do some tremendous things, not just in attracting large tournaments to the city, like USBC Bowling or Conference USA, but we also do a tremendous amount of work towards getting your local residents to build their sports tourism that they do just for the love of the game. I just want to tell you some good news about one particular event. Victor Firth, who was an attorney here in El Paso, he just passed away earlier this year, and Richard Corona came up with an idea. They were both NFL officials, so they decided, you know what, we can do some training here in El Paso. We'd like to bring that to El Paso. So they started doing that. I partnered with them in, I believe, 2009, and the tournament, the camp has just continued to grow and grow and grow, and now it is considered, there's a partnership with the NFL, it's considered one of the three elite camps in the United States by the NFL. So, you know, these are the kind of success stories we have. Cesar Sosa and his mother have built the Cobra Soccer Events. They just generated 900 hotel rooms last, a week and a half ago. They're having another big event. So anyway, it's, I'm honored to be able to continue to do this. The emergency was my husband needed a heart transplant, and there was no capabilities here in El Paso to sustain that, so I did have to relocate to San Antonio, but, and he got his transplant, and so I'm glad to be able to be invited to take a bigger role. Like I said, I never left, but now I can do more. It's something I love to do.
Well, welcome back to, to El Paso, and something that, that struck me some time back, that maybe you can look at our sportsplex and our golfing arenas, and how can we partner up and get some of those, because there's thousands of people that come to those tournaments here in El Paso?
There really is. There's quite a few people that come to tournaments in El Paso. We have some amazing facilities. Not all our facilities are amazing, but the ones that we do have are. The sports park is state of the art, and we just have to find that balance between the desire to host our local league sports, which, I mean, these are quality of life issues that are very important to our citizens, and balancing that with the need to bring a, a big group in that's going to sleep in our hotels, eat in our restaurants, buy our concessions, you know, they're going to do all of those things. So we're in the process of working out a balance between what the city needs to maintain its quality of life and its league play, and what the city also needs to generate extra revenue. So I'm proud to be doing this. I've been doing this for, as a contractor, for almost 20 years, and here I am.
Thank you, and best of luck.
We're actually in the middle of a process, working with Ms. Melissa, about doing a study of, of what else is needed in, in regards to, to facilities here, Commissioner, as well. On the sports tourism side, I created this Excel sheet, which shows you three columns, which is the, the sports tourism side, the, the hotels, these are hotels' numbers, hotel rooms, and, and the, the numbers created by the sports tourism director by that position, and then the hotel rooms created by the concerts, when the production comes in to stay in a hotel, so they produce that. Sports tourism is a different column than the sports tourism director. Why? And, and let me see if I can explain myself appropriately here. There are some events that are, by definition, sports tourism, but they are not involved, the sports tourism director is not involved in that. An example, the El Paso Rhinos. You know, the sports commission is part of it, but not the sports tourism director. If, if we remove the sports tourism director from that equation, we don't lose any of those hotel rooms, because the Rhinos are the ones generating it. But by definition, they, they're produced by the sports commission, and they're in that column. Bull riding, rodeo, you know, you know, Disney on Ice, that's figure skating. We put those hotel rooms on the sports tourism side. The sports tourism director generates it by bringing other tournaments, by, you know, reaching out to the sports events organizers, telling them, hey, you have a local team, a local event? Let me make it regional, so we can invite other people and stay in El Paso, and that's where the sports tourism director is involved. In fiscal year 2021, 2022, the sports commission generated an overall of over 10,000, almost 11,000 hotel rooms overall. This last fiscal year, we did a little bit less, a little bit over 6,000. On this next fiscal year, we did a calendar already with a lot of events that Thea has helped us bring in already, either to the sports park or to city parks or somewhere else, and just by the sports tourism director alone, we're estimating we're going to be producing over 11,000 hotel rooms just by that alone. So that is not including the hotel rooms that the Rhinos are going to be producing, or the concerts are going to be producing in this fiscal year. So hopefully, we will bring you with really, really good numbers by October of 2024. Sports CTA, that is the, the organization that is pretty much the top organization in the country, and it stands for Sports Events and Tourism Association. Thea Chambers, she is a certified sports entertainment, sports event executive. The initials are wrong, it's C S E E E, and she's also a certified sports tourism strategist, STS. I would like also to congratulate Tony Rodriguez, because he also got his certification as an STS. So I'm a little behind, but I'm also getting the certification for that. This, this next year, I will be receiving my certification as a certified venue professional. And Tony, in next year, he'll go to the symposium. Will he get the credit needed also to get, to be certified as a certified venue professional as well? So the sports commission is also trying to grow, trying to get its own certifications in the best interest of the county. I will leave Tony to handle this one.
With the change that we're going to do at the website, and also just the rebranding of the sports commission, letting people know who we are, I mean, we decided, came up with a new logo, so that will be the new logo that we have for the El Paso Sports Commission. And that was in conjunction with Lopez advertising, with Joe Lopez, so did a good design for us there, so we're excited about that, and we'll be excited about getting all that out there for people to know. I know that even just working with a couple of the athletic directors for some of the school districts, like Islares Socorro, we're going to be teaming up with them, bringing their state tournaments to El Paso and using their facilities, so we're definitely looking at, we're going to be visiting some of the sites tomorrow, Thea and myself, so we'll be checking it out. So it's definitely a lot of work going on.
So it's one, one light background, one dark background?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That depends, the purpose, Commissioner. If we put it on a black T-shirt, you know, use a white one or vice versa, like that. That's, that's it for, for us.
Commissioners?
I just have a question. I, I know you all are, are working on, on your events and all, but tell us how important it is for you to plan in advance, long-term planning with respect to the Coliseum, the asset for purposes of booking and-
Super important, Commissioner. Right now, we're in, I mean, bottom line is, our, our contract ends in September 30th, 2024, and right now, we have big promotion companies like Feld, who brings Disney on Ice, and they already submitted a contract for October, to bring it in October. We cannot sign it. Bottom line. We can sign it, so they can, they can hold it, they can, they can say, okay, you have a place this week, this, this date in the Coliseum, but the reality is, we need to disclose that, okay, you're going to come to the Coliseum in October, but you, we don't know who's going to be operating the Coliseum when you come in October, and they don't want to sign it. And I know there's an RFP pending, but the, the reality is, by the time the RFP is granted to whichever company is going to operate it, it's going to be such a short little time to see who's going to be operating, and either, either if it's the sports commission, it's going to be five months or less to continue, or if it's another company, it's not enough time for that other company to do that. I mean, under the county, if it was a different vendor, like food services or cleaning services, five months is more than enough, but for, for our specialty, for the entertainment, it's, it's not enough, and we're struggling right now, and we're afraid that the calls are going to start to dry up, because there isn't any clear path on, on what's going to happen.
Is, is there any way that, that that might be moved up for administration?
Yes, Commissioner. No, that's an excellent question, and I'm glad this came up. So we've been working very closely with Omar, as well as our county attorney's office, for the preparation of this RFP. It's, it's been almost two decades before we've, since we've actually bid this, this vendor out, if you will. So rather than wait, typical RFPs will start them six months in advance. We're starting this one this fall. I've already reached out to Ms. Davidson in purchasing, we've already started working on those specs. We will get that RFP out sooner rather than later to allow for the transition that Mr. Ropel discusses, and I've also been briefing our county attorneys about this. We've talked about, in the event of contracts are, or events are, are programmed or solidified far after September 30th, what can we do in the interim? And so we're talking about potential extensions, so that those contracts don't have to be dropped, right? Of course, if the sports commission is interested in bidding, which I, I understand they are, then it would carry on as normal. But in the event there are events booked after that contract ends, there are ways within the agreements to have extensions, so that we can continue those events without gaps. We're, we're all very much in the exploration phase at this point, but we're starting that RFP very soon. Karen has already told me, let's get on it now if we really want the results by spring. Our goal is to have the, the results by spring, so that we have that six-month gap to transition in the event that we need to.
Yeah, because I, I wouldn't, I don't think the court would want to see that, that we are hamstrung, and then we have a really decline in those events for the following year because of those transition issues. I, I think we'd like to get that done as soon as possible, and maybe if there's, I don't know how, I, I know you talked about doing extensions, if, if some of those issues do come up, maybe those events like Disney on Ice, if that's, you know, they're worried about that, that maybe it can provide an extension at least to October for them, and to be able to book them, because I, I wouldn't want to see us lose particularly something, somebody like Disney on Ice.
Melissa, is there something you can put on the, on the future agenda, just to bring us up to snuff insofar as how far ahead or behind we are-
Yes, sir.
-in some of those contracts?
Yes, sir. I will definitely put something on soon.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioner. And I thought, Melissa, at a prior meeting, we had-
And I thought, Melissa, at a prior meeting, we had had a discussion about, because a lot of the, a lot is still so unknown about everything that's happening at BOTA, and while it looks like the county may not lose any of its property, from my understanding, there's still some unresolved issues, and we don't know if those answers are, have completely been resolved, or those questions have been completely resolved. I thought we had spoken about maybe looking into a short-term extension while we work out the larger contract, once we know exactly what's going to happen at BOTA, again, just so that we're not tying the sports commission's hands when it comes to booking shows in the short term.
Right. I don't recall the details of the extension for next year. I do recall the details for this year that just began. So the court did have the option, given whatever the numbers were, after we reviewed them. But in looking at the numbers, because as Mr. Robella describes, they were successful, the court had the option of renewing without a bid. We could have bid out even this year if we wanted to, but we chose to extend, we renewed. But this is the final, within the current contract, the final renewal options.
The one that we're in now?
The one we're in now. It just started October...
The one that goes through 2024.
Right. It just started October 1, and it goes through September 30th, 2024. So that's the final renewal option, which is why we're speeding up this RFP process. And of course, we can bring options to the court, which may include extensions if needed. I'm keeping county attorneys fully abreast of the options as we're moving forward. So if it does please the court at that time, that rather than go out for RFP, we need an extension, we can bring those options at that time.
And the current contract does allow for there to be bookings beyond the current date. It just requires that there's written approval from the county. So we can continue to book events well into the future. We just have to be made aware of what is being committed to. So if there were, for some reason, a change in vendor, we would have, know what our commitments are, but we would not be limited to just the term of the vendor that's in place.
And Omar, is, is these events, when you're trying to get them into El Paso, if there's a little skittish about coming here in reference to the contract, maybe you need to consult with Melissa or one of us to make sure we get it on the agenda, get it approved?
Thank you, yes. And this is a perfect example. Again, with Disney, the sports commission pays almost $40,000 for the ice rink, to build the ice. So, I mean, if another company is operating the Colosseum, they need to be aware that they need to pay for that as well, you know? So it's not as simple as, oh, okay, you know? And if you're, if you were the event organizer and you're going to bring a million-dollar show, you would like to know who's operating the Colosseum when you come over here.
And so when would you normally be expected to sign the contract with Disney for Disney on Ice?
We have the contract in hand, ma'am.
Already?
Already.
So technically, we could sign it now.
And this week, he already said, why haven't you? When they come in, in October, they bring the new contract with them. They leave it in our hands. And right now, we, they reach out back again, and they said, what's happening? Why haven't you signed it and sent it back? Why haven't you executed it? We haven't said why, because we were thinking that we might just touch this issue today, hopefully. Thank you. So yes, they're waiting, and time's ticking.
The county attorney's office is paying attention, so I think we can get this resolved fairly quickly.
Yeah, and while we're able to book in the future beyond the sports commission's, their contract, I think it's on the other side, where some of the people that are coming in, that might be reticent about booking, not knowing who they're going to deal with is the issue, I think. And so I think we need to really talk about resolving that, like, really quick.
Yes, because after Disney, we have the circus, and we were trying to see if we could bring, Beyond Bang Gold didn't happen this year, because they went bankrupt. But there's other companies that bring the Beyond experience, and we were trying to build this into a tradition. So Tony is, already has another candidate in mind. We can't reach out completely until, and they actually need a full year to see where the tour is going to come in. Trans-Siberian Orchestra, they didn't come to El Paso this time. We have the contact for them. That's another one that we can do in the winter.
All right. Thank you. Great presentation. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Leon, we'd like to go to item number 19. Item number 19 from Health and Social Services. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the development and construction of El Paso County Senior Meal Program, Community Kitchen, to be located at the Isleta Annex, 9521 Socorro Road, with funds from the FY23 Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding Grant.
Morning, Irene.
Aye. Good afternoon, good morning, still. Irene Gutierrez with the Community Services Department. Earlier this year, you recall, we received $4 million from Congresswoman Escobar's Community Project Funding Appropriations Program. The purpose of the request originally from the county was to request funds to build a community kitchen to support our senior meal program and expand it, and also to develop a kitchen concept for the community to take advantage or an opportunity to have surge capacity for food service or kitchen ability in our community. For example, during the pandemic, there was a large need for food service for our unhoused population, who we were trying to house safely during COVID. We also, as you know, have had our migrant surges in our community, and we don't have a large community kitchen with a capacity to provide surge food prep for those types of incidents. And so this has long been a request that I have had for the senior meal program to expand as well. I have in the past submitted CIP requests. We had this opportunity to apply to the Congresswoman's Appropriations Project. We did receive that funding. That request was submitted with two options. One was to either build that kitchen in county-owned property to support, like I said, our senior meal program, but also to expand it. And two, or two, to partner with El Paso's Fighting Hunger or providers alike to join in a community kitchen initiative project, as well as our senior meal program. And so we've been exploring both options for several months, since we received notice of funding earlier this year. We've had a lot of internal conversations with our internal departments, including our county attorney's office purchasing budget, about these both options. And so, given the advantages and disadvantages that we've explored about both options, I am recommending that we move forward with this project, building on the Isleta Annex property, which is the property that we considered early on. It's at 9521 Socorro Road, so that we can get forward with securing these funds, conducting the environmental review, and we can finally get our kitchen built for our senior meal program. I will add, we are going to turn 50 years old next year, our senior meal program. So just so you know, we're in our 49th year of the county support of this program, and it has always been, we have always been serving meals in someone else's kitchen. And so I think this is a long time coming for us to be able to move forward with this program, finally have ownership and the freedom to expand our program and do some innovative things for our community. And I'd like to continue that for this project.
And Irene, it's actually in the annex that we would build this?
Not, well, so there's property behind the annex that is still county-owned, and it's large enough for us to do this kitchen. With parking, there's a lot of innovative ideas that we have for the design of it. But also importantly, this does not infringe on any opportunity to continue to seek out a partnership or potential partnership with the food bank. The annex property happens to be a few blocks down the street from the food bank's main warehouse, and so we can continue to explore those opportunities to partner with them, to join their vision. They also have a community kitchen vision that we've been discussing with them for a long time. So those opportunities still exist. We are very much in favor of that partnership opportunity, and so this property just continues to present that.
This is exciting, and really, if you've listened to some of the complaints or praises for some of our customers, it just falls right in line of the food that they were actually going to be providing to these folks, commissioners.
This is a wonderful, wonderful project, and I think the location is great, because it's right along the Mission Trail. And so you left off, you didn't tell us the name, that Rosalba, I think it was Rosalba that had to come up with a potential name for the community kitchen, at least when she shared the idea with me. So the name, and I'm giving Rosalba credit, hopefully it was her, not somebody else, but it was a kitchen with a mission, since it's right on the Mission Trail, and I thought that was just beautiful. So I'm very excited.
So that's what we're going to call it?
I liked it. I thought it was really nice.
Yes, it's right on the Mission Trail. And so there's a lot of advantages to that area. There is a very good access to Loop 375, which helps us distribute our meals throughout. From Loop 375, of course, we can get I-10. Right now, we serve 3,000 meals a day, but we've been restricted by, you know, because of where we're at and where we're serving. And I do want to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, for the last 49 years, we've been using a kitchen with the City of El Paso's partnership. And so I do want to say that they've been really good partners throughout this entire tenure that our program has existed. But because it's their kitchen, we are restricted from expanding, doing some innovative things, you know, increasing the capacity of that kitchen. So for many, many years, we've only been able to serve upwards of 3,000 meals because of the space limitation. And so this new concept will allow us to expand to more, and expand the concept to becoming a more community kitchen for surge capacity in our community.
Commissioner?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad that we're doing this, and thank you for getting this project going. Is that going to also allow us to bring that? I know you had mentioned to us that previously the cost of the meals had gone up. Will this allow us to kind of keep the cost down as well?
So the cost of the meal is not, so where we're at, or the kitchen that we have or not have, doesn't impact the cost of our meals. The cost of our meals have been rising due to, you know, food price increase in our community or nationwide, and supply chain issues and those things. So it's not really going to impact it, sir.
It's just going to make it easier for us to work with respect to providing?
Correct. It will facilitate us expanding, creating some innovative ideas that we've had in mind for many, many years that we couldn't do, and then incorporating this community concept for a surge capacity. We saw a huge need for a kitchen during our migrant surges, and we couldn't accommodate this community, couldn't accommodate that in large scale, and so this kitchen would provide that opportunity.
Thank you.
And if it's approved by the court today, when do you anticipate possibly having a groundbreaking?
That's still several months down the line. This approval allows us to identify an actual address and location, so that we can conduct an environmental review, which is required by the funder. Once we procure for that and conduct the environmental review, after it's cleared, then we can start construction. I think construction probably is about a year down the line, if I want to, if I want to be optimistic about it. But this starts that process.
Hopefully, it'll be sometime next year before I leave.
Yes.
Well, before I leave this chair, not this world.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Do I hear any, oh, Commissioner?
Did you have a question first?
No, 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 I was going to make the motion, but go ahead.
I just, I just had a, just a question. I know that, you know, I advocated for this to be a little more centrally located, and I trust that, you know, with the analysis and the location that's being proposed, you know, the cost of delivering the meals was taken into account, as a lot of them are, I think, most of the people we serve are probably closer to my district than they are to where this is located. But, you know, I'm willing to support it, but I just want to make sure also whether it's centrally located or whether it's in this location, that we need to look for as many opportunities to connect with our local farmers and agriculture industry to source the food that we're, that we're going to be providing here. And so I just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, sir. That's actually one of the concepts that we have as part of this plan, to engage local farmers, but also to have our own community produce, producing garden. We have enough space in that property to be able to do that, so those are some of the concepts and ideas that we have for this project. Yes, sir.
Commissioner?
I'd like to make the motion to develop and construct the Senior Meal Program Community Kitchen at the Isleta Annex address.
Second.
Commissioner Ogin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leon, we'd like to go back and go to item, I believe it's number 12. Let me just double-check. Yes, item number, I'm sorry, not 12.
Nine.
Item number nine. Thank you, Commissioner. And then after that, we'd like to ask to go into executive session.
Okay, yes. Item number nine, Commissioner's Court. Discuss and take appropriate action to direct staff to explore the creation of a county accessibility advisory commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. I am bringing this, this item to the court, because, you know, equity and accessibility have long been a priority of my precinct to office, and, you know, we've worked very closely with the disabled community to, you know, understand their issues over the years. You know, we worked with them to come up with policy priorities and talking about issues with local policing and how local police engage with the disabled community after George Floyd's death, and to use that for advocacy moving forward when it came to looking at local policing. You know, during COVID, our office asked that we have ASL interpreters, and we still have them now, even though we're out of COVID, and that we still have virtual meetings and virtual access to our meetings, which I think is great. We also advocated on behalf of the disabled community to have better access to information from the city and county during COVID, regarding the disease and the dashboard that we had online. And during this last campaign, we really worked with Democrats with disabilities to make accessibility one of our, one of our platforms, and brought this and other, this item and others to the Commissioner's Court during our strategic planning, where, thank you to my colleagues, we've made this one of our priorities. And so this is the next step in, in that line of work. And, you know, we were, we first talked about this commission with advocates this summer. They suggested that we, that we create this commission, it's similar to the city's. And so my staff worked with them, along with our county staff, to develop this proposal. And we wanted to be sure that it served a specific purpose that helps to advance county priorities while meeting the community's needs. And as you'll see from the presentation that's going to be given today, a lot of time was spent and a lot of thought put towards this, especially into the parameters of a county accessibility advisory commission. And I'm hopeful that you'll greet this with the same enthusiasm that I had when we first started talking about it with Mr. Salvalllo and others. And, you know, I really want to thank my staff, Dr. Cynthia Renteria, she's hiding behind the pillar right now, but who, and I want to also thank our Human Resources ADA Coordinator, Amanda Manning, for her guidance, as well as Betsy Keller, and of course, the advocates who have made such a difference in our community and are here today, so that they can go to work through the county to continue making the difference that is needed. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our presenters. Mr. Salvalllo, the floor is yours.
Where's the mic? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, good afternoon, or, I think it's still good morning, sorry about that. Just for my orientation, can you just tell me where you're sitting? Is that, no, I'm looking the right way?
We're sitting straight ahead of, straight, I'm a little bit to your right. There are two members of the court that are a little bit to your left.
Okay. Well, thank you, first of all. My name is George Salvalllo. I'm co-founder of El Paso Vision Imperative Lighting Experience, along with my brother here, Mike Valamann. He also serves as my security, by the way. So basically...
He's big enough, he's big enough to do.
Right. We ask for your support for this important initiative. We have to understand that there's over 100,000 individuals in the county of El Paso that identify with some type of disability. And with that being said, yes, the city does have a committee, which I'm sitting on, but within the county, the era, the rural areas, that's where there is a big gap. When I say that... gap. When I say that, there's, for example, transportation. So we hope that you can support this commission, help us move forward, help us people with disabilities be empowered, and give us a voice, a voice within the committee or within the county. And for that, we have to also understand that this kind of initiative really impacts people's with disabilities' lives. When I say that, it's not a simple, oh, wow, we have a committee or we have a commission. This kind of entity or committee, or commission, actually, will actually impact people's lives, which is huge. I mean, this is something you can't really identify until you're in that situation. Transportation, I said again, is really important for people's disabilities, especially in the rural areas. So again, we ask for your support moving this agenda forward, developing a commission that will help us be more independent and empower us. And before I go, I want to thank you, Mr. Stout. Commissioner Stout, I'm looking the right way?
Your--
For your help, not only was this, it took a while also with your staff, with Mr. Luis and Cynthia Renteria. They were, they were pretty good. They were pushing us along, and sometimes, you know, kind of laid off, but they pushed us, so we appreciate that. Also, Mr. Stout, those commissioners and the people that are hearing, Mr. Stout also did a very important thing during the COVID. So what happened is when COVID kicked in, it kind of crystallized all the deficiencies that we impact, that we encounter. And what I mean by that, it's simple stuff. For example, social media. When they would say, oh, come to this place for a shot or the vaccine, the shot for the vaccine or testing, they would put up a little image or flyer, and someone like myself or Mr. Palamad, we could not see that. Or when you have a website that's not accessible, or when you have avenues to a vaccination or testing facility that's not accessible for those with a mobility device. So thank you, Mr. Stout, for taking part of that. Also, Art Pietro, Veronica Escobar, but thank you, sir, for that. I want to say that before I left. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as transportation, is Jose, did he come in? I thought I saw him here. As far as the county, we're making special allowances for people that cannot get to our bus stops, where we actually go and pick them up. So all of these go hand in hand, and I'm sure, thank you, Commissioner Stout, for bringing this up, that we incorporate a lot of these issues into our regular procedure, make it a routine kind of procedure as we move forward to make it right for folks that don't have the accessibility that others do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Palamad, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, sir. I think the creation, thank you, thank you again, Mr. Stout, and thank you. Basically, trying to do is make things a little bit more seamless also with the city and the county. I think this will enhance what we're trying to do as far as the county. As far as transportation, I think that would be great if we could get this thing going. Thank you.
Jose, if you don't mind, just explaining, for the folks that are home right now, the opportunities that they do in fact have insofar as using our buses.
Good morning, Commissioners Salvalleros with County Administration. The county's been actively working on trying to expand public transit service. Part of that is actually we're in the first, the final stages. We hope to launch ADA service at the beginning of January. It'll be the first time the county offers this service, so we're excited to be able to do that. And really looking to expand the delivery options for all residents, and to really help not just meet individuals with specific needs, but then also individuals who may live in areas where there is no service and trying to get them onto our system. So it'll be something that we will promote very widely once we finish the final stages of contracting over the next several months.
Thank you. I think it's going to be a welcome addition.
Do I need to go with this?
One more speaker?
Yes, my name is Sissy Bird, and I just want to say I'm here in support of this because even though I am not a part of the differently able community, I know what it is to have a relative that was legally blind. So therefore, I came here in support of what you're voting on. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And I think Kristi Lai, I don't know if she was able to call in, Miguel or--
I believe she's on the line, on Teams.
Okay. Can we hear from--
Christine Zimmerly?
No, no, it's--
Kristi Lai?
Lai.
Standby?
Kristi Lai. Yeah, it's K-R-I-S-T-I Elliott.
We, no, she's not on Teams.
Okay, okay, maybe she wasn't able to call in. Cynthia?
Commissioner, if you would like to just read the purpose--
Yeah.
--that we've outlined, we do have the backup on the agenda. And I do want to say thank you to the folks that are here today. And I'll say that all the people that are listed as community sponsors participated, gave feedback in some way or form to shape this proposal. So this was really community generated, community led, and we had many conversations over several months. And so we're so happy to finally be able to bring this before the court.
Thank you, Dr. Renteria. So just a little bit more background, I'm going off of the policy proposal here. You know, the reason why we want to do that, this is because it's important for people with disabilities to be able to participate in the advancement of accessibility, including areas related to increased access to public transportation, education, recreation, health, and employment. Supporting people with disabilities in their full participation in economic, social, and in government is a key factor in reducing poverty and increasing well-being, and it's part of creating fair, safe, and secure communities. So the purpose, I guess the request that we're making here is that we request that the County of El Paso, which has a much higher percentage of people with disabilities than most other Texas counties with large cities, establish our own County of El Paso Accessibility Advisory Commission. And the purpose of the commission would be to serve as a diverse and inclusive body that will highlight the importance of participation by people with disabilities for advancing accessibility and increasing access via ADA implementation and universal design considerations throughout the county facilities and properties. It will also develop and disseminate public information campaigns to foster awareness of the challenges people with disabilities face navigating public spaces, and to combat the stigma of people with disabilities to create more compassionate, inclusive, and understanding society. So the objective is that the El Paso County Accessibility Advisory Commission will serve as an advisory body to the county judge and commissioners' court concerning the needs of people with a broad range of disabilities to create greater access and promote inclusivity throughout the county. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments. Yes?
I do. Thank you, Chief and Commissioner. Thank you for bringing this up. I know we have a, we do have a access coordinator, right, in the county?
Mm-hmm. We have an ADA coordinator, Amanda Manning.
Okay. And I just, questions about how this is going to work? How's the commission going to work with our coordinator? Are they going to report to him, or who's going to be if this passes?
Commissioners, if I may?
Yes.
So we did receive feedback from Ms. Manning throughout this process. We also talked to transportation, and so we knew that some of these projects were coming up. So it's really perfect timing to bring in the community to see what the county is already working on and kind of take it from there. So the motion today would be to direct staff to take appropriate action to explore the creation of the commission. So we would be following a similar process that the women's commission followed, where staff will bring back a presentation and say, this is what is needed to create this commission, and then provide a process for either appointing or at-large representatives. And we have talked with our community group and have explained that this process took about a year for the women's commission. So we're hoping that all those questions are addressed when staff is able to get this item, if it's approved today. And that would be the next step, is to address those questions to see where this commission would live, what is the best and most appropriate department to connect with this group. So that is the process that we will be following. I don't know if Betsy would like to add anything.
Well, let me, let me add, as part of the policy proposal, there's kind of an outline of what the functions, you know, we see the functions possibly being, but obviously with the work that we're going to be doing with our ADA coordinator, with Betsy's office, with the advocates, when it comes to the creation of this. But the idea would be that it would function to help create better access to transportation with the county, connectivity from the county to the city, and home to home, especially with transportation, city transportation and county transportation. We would hopefully have internal training available to all county employees, including sensitivity training provided by people with disabilities, and intersectionality awareness training, whether it be sexual orientation, gender identity, race, ethnicity, disability. Number three would be public education about accessibility, including but not limited to parking, social media, websites, bathrooms, invisible disabilities such as chronic illnesses like renal failure, diabetes, sleep disorders, and others that can significantly impair normal activities of daily living, affordable, accessible, and integrated housing, public accommodations as defined by the ADA, and other federal, state, and local laws, and policies applied to county facilities such as the courthouse and the Colosseum. ADA and accessibility considerations and suggestions were considerations into the county's strategic plan, including websites, parks, county jail, and other facilities, and also to liaise with the City of El Paso Accessibility Committee and other surrounding townships throughout the County of El Paso. So that's kind of the framework that we would like to work from. But obviously, it's going to be, it's going to be something that will be available for more input and modeling the way that we would like.
Yes, sir. So similar to the women's commission, there was a proposed framework, proposed items to work on. And then the commission ultimately, once it was created and the commissioners were sat, they selected their top three goals, I believe. So this is again what we're proposing. If approved today, then staff would advise us the next steps to create the commission, and it would follow a similar process. And then once seated, they would name their top priorities.
So if I could, just in response to Commissioner Coronado, so you're not formally creating the commission today, you're directing us to go do the work to bring back to you. And as part of that, we do also analyze what other commissions, like what city commissions exist, and whether they're created by ordinance or how they're created, we may come back with, and I don't know, this is, but like sometimes we look and evaluate, should we just ask them to have seats on their commission? Or is it, is there a different type of need or issue to address for the county? And then we bring back recommendations on what does that look like, bylaws and the structure for the commission.
Okay. And along those lines, I just wanted to ask with respect to our current evaluation of all our facilities, do we have something comprehensive with that from our department?
Yes, sir. So there is a transition plan and an evaluation. It's conducted every couple of years that looks at our, and then prioritizes. There's also a period, periodically we go out and ask for public input on which buildings are, like, are which buildings, facilities, or programs are most accessed or most needed for access and what improvements are needed. And then we do a ranking, and then we set aside funding every year to work on those improvements that are needed.
And I guess now that we're going to be having talks about what we're going to go out for the GOs next year, are some of those issues large enough that we would need to incorporate those into our capital improvement plan for it?
So any project, what we do is anytime there is a large project, we make sure that the ADA improvements are part of that large project. So like, for example, if we're remodeling floors of the jail, that would include improving ADA, bringing it up to all ADA accessibility standards.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Stout, would you like to make--
Yeah. So barring any other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and make the motion to direct our staff to move forward with this project.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Before I make my, I voice my vote, I just want to let everybody know that I'm sure had Judge Ben here, he is 100% behind this. So my vote is aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner Stout.
Thank you, Mrs. Salvallah. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing this up.
Thank you all for coming.
Okay, we'd like to now go into executive session to discuss items 23A and 23D pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official--
Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten a vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten a vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The County of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Majority of the students here in Torneo actually fall under the Torneo Independent School District, and that is where they go. They have four schools in total, including an early college high school as well.
Yeah, and some of the things that they've been able to accomplish within this community is just so great, especially with the Torneo Independent School District. Everything from establishing programs like STEM, as well as different like art programs that they have, really, really cool. And this is for kids pre-K all the way through 12th grade. And one of the other things that I wanted to point out when it comes to Torneo ISD, one of the highest graduation rates in the entire region.
Wow, that's pretty amazing. And I know we have our KTSM 9 News reporter as well, Toni Davis. She talked to the superintendent of Torneo ISD as well, and she's going to tell us a little bit more about the school itself and their achievements. Hi there, Toni.
Hi there, Carla, Andy. As you know, Torneo may not be one of the biggest districts in the borderland, but that does not let them stop them from investing in their students' education.
Our mission is to continue to serve our children as if it was a big district.
With only 813 students across the district, Torneo ISD focuses on building back up the surrounding community. This includes opportunities for adults to learn English, apply for citizenship and receive their high school diploma through a GED.
That is our way of moving our district forward, and what we like to say is moving our community, our learning community forward, because we're the hub. We're the hub. We're the heart of the, of the community.
Smaller district means less teachers and administration, but those who work for Torneo ISD say this creates a family where they can work together to give their students the best education.
We have mom and dad, we have brothers and sisters, aunts and uncles. We argue, we disagree, we come to a mutual agreement or disagreement, and then we're back to, we're here for the kids.
There are plans in place to bring in new businesses to the area. The county has received the funding, but it is now up to the community to give input on what they would like to see.
That would definitely allow for more of the work jobs to be able to come into Torneo so that our people are able to come back, and not only that, people to move in and be able to get closer to the jobs that are going to be able to be offered here.
We also spoke with Vega Barrio about how they plan to expand their STEM programs across the district, and we'll have her answer later on KTSM 9 News at 6. For now, reporting from Torneo, Toni Davis, KTSM 9 News.
All right, Toni, thank you so much for that report. But Andy, you know, Torneo is more than just a pit stop. It's not just a place that you drive through. It's such a tight-knit community. I don't know if you noticed, when we were driving here, I saw people sitting in their front yards. I think they were maybe playing cards, having a little cool beverage.
Dominoes, I felt like I saw a little bit of that.
I love that small-town vibe. It's just awesome.
And for the people that, you know, we've talked to, the community here that we've talked to, and kind of finding out reasons why to visit Torneo, or why they even live here, and it's that small-town vibe, right?
Exactly.
And something else that I noticed when we kind of came in is the local little convenience store or supermarket, Don Pancho, that to me has small-town vibe written all over it, a community or an establishment that everyone kind of goes to for all their go-tos, all the necessities that you need.
Yeah, Andy, and all of these places have a story behind it, just like Don Pancho. Jonathan Martinez tells us the opportunity to open the store presented itself to his dad 10 years ago, and ever since, they have been serving the Torneo community. But he also tells us that it's not always about running his store and making money, it's about sharing with the community and supporting one another. Take a listen.
Well, I've been helping out with sports. There's, they, they have baseball teams here and soccer team. I sponsor a couple of them. I try to help them with, with what I can. Even on schools, I've, I've helped some of them with what I can.
This is oral medication, is a new order. So once you get home, you can go ahead and get it.
Oh, fantastic.
Is that it for?
So every Wednesday, we host a free clinic for the community, for our county constituents. We offer free spay and neuter surgeries, free age-appropriate vaccinations and free microchips. We start our clinic at 6:00 a.m. all the way to 2:00 p.m. Our intake, we usually take in pets up to two years currently. This is right now tentatively until our new clinic is open, hopefully by October.
Say hello, everybody.
We've been doing it since about 2020. It's been super successful with our community members bringing in their pets to get spayed and neutered. A lot of the people don't have the resources to be able to pay for a spay surgery, a neuter surgery. Sometimes it's upwards of $500, so we're very glad to be able to offer that for free here. Just shoot us an email at spayneuter@epcounty.com, and with the services you need, your information and the services that your pets need, and we'll get you on our servicing list.
There we go. Yeah, we got it, we got it.
Today, I was told by my wife that a friend of hers told her that their dogs just got vaccinated for free. So for her dogs, they were never vaccinated from birth, so I was like, you know what? Let's go do it. They never got their shots. We weren't able to have the money to get it, so we heard about the free service, so we were like, let's go ahead and see how it goes and see how the dogs do, and they did pretty well for their first time. It is very important, because I know with some dogs or some families that can't get vaccinated pets, they end up passing away in a short time. Due to the fact that I was able to get my dogs to get the service, I'm really glad and happy about it.
In a few months, we're going to have a brand-new clinic on the Horizon Sparks area, and we're going to be able to do a lot more surgeries and vaccinations. So it's going to have a big impact on the citizens and the pets of the county. We're going to do a lot of surgeries, but also it's going to be a training facility for the, for the new doctors and also for students, because nowadays, they don't get a lot of hands-on practice on, on the veterinary schools. We're bringing students from Juarez to train and also to learn, and if they're interested in getting licensed here in the U.S., we're helping them. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of new doctors in the near future.
Torneo ISD was talking to us, they were joking around, absolutely great vibe here, but I'll just let you take a look yourself.
Well, out here, living in small towns, well, you enjoy the, the culture, that kind of stuff, so it's really nice.
It's home, it's home. We're a family community here, you know, we're all one. Everybody knows everybody, and it's really tranquilo, it's calm here, you know? We all look out for each other. It's safe. I feel safe here.
It's awesome. It's awesome. The, the community is pretty awesome. The people here, 10 years ago, when we got here, we were new to the community, we were new to the people. They, they've been pretty good. They're, they're awesome.
Thing is that it's real quiet, peaceful out here in town. There's not much things to do, but it's quiet. It's not like the big cities that you go out there and live in the cities, and there's always things to do that you really don't have time to really sit down and enjoy your, your afternoons. So that's why I've been living here for 45 years now.
Hideaway Lakes is down the road. I know that much. El Paso's not that far from here, like 20 minutes from El Paso.
Like 90% of, of what I have here is local. Yeah, 90%.
Thanks to our Sean Feliz for that wonderful report. I love how one of the residents says, "It's just an awesome, awesome, awesome community." Hey, I agree. Very simple. Well said.
Our official name is Illumina Public Library, El Paso County's all-digital library. The reason that it's named Illumina is because libraries illuminate, they bring to light information. We have ebooks, audiobooks, magazines, a streaming service to watch movies and to listen to music.
What are we trying to do? We're trying to see the, what our total, total remaining.
We have programming here at the Aguadulce Community Center. We have computer literacy classes, conversational English classes.
B2 plus B3.
And we recently started going over the Microsoft suite, so Microsoft Word. Today, I did Microsoft Excel.
You speak.
Do you speak?
Do you speak?
So she checks out a tablet and she checks out a hotspot to use at home for herself and for her kids.
Estoy tratando de aprender el inglés para, pues tratar de ayudar a mis niños porque pues yo no sé nada en inglés.
We also have a lot of people using the services from home.
Pues ella lo usa en internet, lo usa porque pues traen el Chrome, se llama, de la escuela, y tiene que hacer taras.
At first, it was a little bit difficult to explain the concept that it's an all-digital library.
But yeah, people are understanding. This is the future. This is necessary if you want to continue to stay relevant.
The hotspot and the tablet is to help bridge that gap and to give all of the folks out here access to internet.
And it's going to be one of those accessible things that makes the entire county more equitable, and of course, it allows people to be participating in things they might have not been able to do so prior to this new initiative.
Que bueno que ahí está ayuda, porque es una enorme, enorme ayuda, y pues es una oportunidad muy grande que nos dan de poder ayudarnos a nosotros.
This is our website, and right here on the front, it says, "Click here to sign up for a live recard."
So it's free to everybody who lives in El Paso County, regardless if you live in the city or not.
Welcome back to KTSM 9 News at 6, our Small Town Spotlight live from Torneo High School. I'm standing here on the football field, and the athletics programs at Torneo have been some of the best that they've seen in recent memory, the last few years, a golden era, if you will, of Coyote athletics, from state championships to the first Division One recruits in school history. Let's take a look at the last couple of years at Torneo's athletics programs. The last two years of athletics at Torneo High School have been arguably some of the best in school history across multiple sports. On the diamond, the baseball program has won at least one playoff series in each of the last three years. Perhaps the best team in Torneo history went to the 3A regional quarterfinals in 2021. That year was huge for the Coyotes. Lizbeth Fieto won the 3A silver medal in the shot put at the UIL State meet, then became the first Torneo athlete to ever earn a Division One scholarship, signing with UTEP.
It's a great honor, because it's hard to inspire girls here, because they think only guys could make it far in life. But I'm trying to change that, to make girls believe that we could do it. It doesn't mean that just because we're a girl, doesn't mean that we don't have the strength as a guy.
The next year, the track was even kinder to the Coyotes, as Angel Torres medaled twice at the 2022 State Track Meet. Torres finished with a bronze in the 3200 meters. Then later that night, he became the first Torneo athlete to ever win a state championship in any sport, taking gold in the 1600.
I remember Coach told me right before the race, at 250 meters, no one can outkick you. So I thought about that, and I waited till the last 100, and I went, and it hurt so bad, but it was worth it. It feels good to represent Torneo and all of El Paso.
Daniel Romero followed in Torres's footsteps this year at State, running the 3200 and the 1600 meters, finishing sixth and ninth respectively in those events. On the hardwood, the Torneo boys basketball team spent much of the 2022-23 season ranked in Class 3A in the state of Texas. The Coyotes rolled through much of their season going undefeated in district play. They ultimately finished the season 30 and 2.
To be state-recognized, I mean, that's a big accomplishment, but it's like a big target on our back as well. I mean, we have a standard, we already met that standard, so we just got to go up from there.
They're a small town with a lot of fight, and Torneo hopes to continue the success they've had into the coming years.
The Honorable Robert J. Galván County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's Domestic Relations Office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's access to justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information, accurate, current, freely-accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's 8th District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The 8th Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several.
And the athletics programs at Torneo have been some of the best that they've seen in recent memory, the last few years. A golden era, if you will, of Coyote athletics, from state championships to the first Division One recruits in school history. Let's take a look at the last couple of years at Torneo's athletics programs. The last two years of athletics at Torneo High School have been arguably some of the best in school history across multiple sports. On the diamond, the baseball program has won at least one playoff series in each of the last three years. Perhaps the best team in Torneo history went to the 3A regional quarterfinals in 2021. That year was huge for the Coyotes. Lizbeth Fieto won the 3A silver medal in the shot put at the UIL State meet, then became the first Torneo athlete to ever earn a Division One scholarship, signing with UTEP.
It's a great honor because it's hard to inspire girls here because they think only guys could make it far in life. But I'm trying to change that, to make girls believe that we could do it. It doesn't mean that just because we're a girl, doesn't mean that we don't have the strength as a guy.
The next year, the track was even kinder to the Coyotes, as Angel Torres medaled twice at the 2022 State Track Meet. Torres finished with a bronze in the 3200 meters. Then later that night, he became the first Torneo athlete to ever win a state championship in any sport, taking gold in the 1600.
I remember Coach told me right before the race, "At 250 meters, no one can outkick you." So I thought about that and I waited till the last hundred and I went and it hurt so bad, but it was worth it. It feels good to represent Torneo and all of El Paso.
Daniel Romero followed in Torres's footsteps this year at state, running the 3200 and the 1600 meters, finishing sixth and ninth respectively in those events. On the hardwood, the Torneo boys basketball team spent much of the 2022-23 season ranked in Class 3A in the state of Texas. The Coyotes rolled through much of their season going undefeated in district play. They ultimately finished the season 30 and 2.
To be state-recognized, I mean, that's a big accomplishment. But it's like a big target in our back as well. I mean, we have a standard. We already met that standard, so we just got to go up from there.
They're a small town with a lot of fight, and Torneo hopes to continue the success they've had into the coming years.
The Honorable Robert J. Galván County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's Domestic Relations Office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's Access to Justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information, accurate, current, freely-accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's 8th District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The 8th Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman Judge Robert J. Galván in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney. And it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be successful in accomplishing what they need to do within the court system.
The two-floor library facility has a comprehensive collection of print and electronic resources covering federal, regional, state, and local jurisdictions, conference rooms to accommodate attorneys and their clients, or for meeting space. There are computers with webcam capabilities and private study rooms. Printing copying services are available to the public for a fee. There is also technology on hand to scan and fax documents.
This is an access-to-justice initiative. This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands who live in El Paso. Because without that, without their ability to have access to information, access to books, access to computers, access to be able to use the justice system, they're left out in the cold.
The Law Library is a great location to access important legal resources to include published cases, forms, court rules, practice guides, plus historical legal books not available digitally, while guided by experienced staff. Law Library staff performs outreach in order to help ensure the most vulnerable in our community is aware of the services offered. The Law Library staff is also key in providing the public in-person information on the history of the county courthouse by providing guided tours to the public.
You can see she's not blindfolded. And throughout history, there's been times where she's blindfolded.
The Law Library is open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays. For more information, call 915-546-2245, or email eplawlibrary@epcounty.com.
You will find the library to be a welcoming and judgment-free place, where you will be met with dignity, respect, and discretion.
The Robert J. Galván County Law Library is committed to facilitate access to legal information for the citizens of El Paso County.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kid should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos. Visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally-recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally-recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Majority of the students here in Torneo actually fall under the Torneo Independent School District, and that is where they go. They have four schools in total, including an early college high school as well.
And some of the things that they've been able to accomplish within this community is just so great, especially with the Torneo Independent School District. Everything from establishing programs like STEM, as well as different like art programs that they have, really, really cool. And this is for kids pre-K all the way through 12th grade. And one of the other things that I wanted to point out when it comes to Torneo ISD, one of the highest graduation rates in the entire region.
That's pretty amazing. And I know we have our KTSM 9 News reporter as well, Toni Davis. She talked to the superintendent of Torneo ISD as well, and she's going to tell us a little bit more about the school itself and their achievements. Hi there, Toni.
Hi there, Carla, Andy. As you know, Torneo may not be one of the biggest districts in the borderland, but that does not let them stop them from investing in their students' education.
Our mission is to continue to serve our children as if it was a big district.
With only 813 students across the district, Torneo ISD focuses on building back up the surrounding community. This includes opportunities for adults to learn English, apply for citizenship, and receive their high school diploma through a GED.
That is our way of moving our district forward. And what we like to say is moving our community, our learning community forward, because we're the hub. We're the hub. We're the heart of the of the community.
Smaller district means less teachers and administration, but those who work for Torneo ISD say this creates a family where they can work together to give their students the best education.
We have mom and dad. We have brothers and sisters, aunts and uncles. We argue, we disagree, we come to a mutual agreement or disagreement, and then we're back to, "We're here for the kids."
There are plans in place to bring in new businesses to the area. The county has received the funding, but it is now up to the community to give input on what they would like to see.
That would definitely allow for more of the work jobs to be able to come into Torneo so that our people are able to come back. And not only that, people to move in and be able to get closer to the jobs that are going to be able to be offered here.
We also spoke with Vega Barrio about how they plan to expand their STEM programs across the district, and we'll have our answer later on KTSM 9 News at 6. For now, reporting from Torneo, Toni Davis, KTSM 9 News.
All right, Toni, thank you so much for that report. But Andy, you know, Torneo is more than just a pit stop. It's not just a place that you drive through. It's such a tight-knit community. I don't know if you noticed, when we were driving here, I saw people sitting in their front yards. I think they were maybe playing cards, having a little cool beverage. I love that small-town vibe. It's just awesome.
And for the people that, you know, we've talked to, the community here that we've talked to, and kind of finding out reasons why to visit Torneo, or why they even live here, and it's that small-town vibe, right? And something else that I noticed when we kind of came in is the local little convenience store or supermarket, Don Pancho. That, to me, has small-town vibe written all over it, a community or an establishment that everyone kind of goes to for all their go-tos, all the necessities that you need.
Yeah, Andy, and all of these places have a story behind it, just like Don Pancho. Jonathan Martinez tells us the opportunity to open the store presented itself to his dad 10 years ago. And ever since, they have been serving the Torneo community. But he also tells us that it's not always about running his store and making money. It's about sharing with the community and supporting one another. Take a listen.
Well, I've been helping out with sports. There's, they have baseball teams here and soccer team. I sponsor a couple of them. I try to help them with what I can. Even on schools, I've helped some of them with what I can.
This is oral medication, is a new one. So once you get home, you can go ahead and get it.
Oh, fantastic.
Is that it for?
So every Wednesday, we host a free clinic for the community, for our county constituents. We offer free spay-neuter surgeries, free age-appropriate vaccinations, and free microchips. We start our clinic at 6:00 a.m., all the way to 2:00 p.m. Our intake, we usually take in pets up to two years currently. This is right now tentatively until our new clinic is open, hopefully by October. Say hello, everybody. We've been doing it since about 2020. It's been super successful with our community members bringing in their pets to get spayed and neutered. A lot of the people don't have the resources to be able to pay for a space surgery, a neuter surgery. Sometimes it's upwards of $500. So we're very glad to be able to offer that for free here. Just shoot us an email at spayneuter@epcounty.com. And with the services you need, your information, and the services that your pets need, and we'll get you on our servicing list.
Yeah, we got it, we got it.
Today I was told by my wife that a friend of hers told her that their dogs just got vaccinated for free. So for her dogs, they were never vaccinated from birth. So I was like, you know what? Let's go do it. They never got their shots. We weren't able to have the money to get it. So we heard about the free service. So we were like, let's go ahead and see how it goes and see how the dogs do. And they did pretty well for their first time. It is very important because I know with some dogs or some families that can't get vaccinated, pets, they end up passing away in a short time. Due to the fact that I was able to get my dogs to get the service, I'm really glad and happy about it.
In a few months, we're going to have a brand-new clinic on the Horizon Sparks area. And we're going to be able to do a lot more surgeries and vaccinations. So it's going to have a big impact on the citizens and the pets of the county. We're going to do a lot of surgeries, but also it's going to be a training facility for the for the new doctors and also for students. Because nowadays, they don't get a lot of hands-on practice on the veterinary schools. We're bringing students from Juarez to train and also to learn. And if they're interested in getting licensed here in the U.S., we're helping them. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of new doctors in the near future.
Torneo ISD was talking to us. They were joking around. Absolutely great vibe here, but I'll just let you take a look yourself.
Well, out here, living in the small towns, well, you enjoy the culture, that kind of stuff. So it's really nice.
It's home. It's home. We're a family community here. You know, we're all one. Everybody knows everybody. And it's really tranquilo, it's calm here, you know? We all look out for each other. It's safe. I feel safe here.
It's awesome. It's awesome. The community is pretty awesome. The people here. 10 years ago, when we got here, we were new to the community. We're new to the people.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item number 17 from Economic Development postponed October 30, 2023 pursuant to Texas Tax Code Section 312.002(c)(1). Hold a public hearing regarding the proposed amendment to the El Paso County Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria. Opinion number 2521. Could we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Remove second.
Commissioner Ogin.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Landeros and County Administration. Here to present some proposed revisions to the county's tax abatement guidelines and criteria. As the court recalls, last month, you approved the existing set of criteria to allow the county to engage into 312 abatement agreements with private businesses. We brought back a few modifications for the court's consideration. These have been updated from what was included on the attachment. And if you can go to the second page, the major criteria, what this really does is broaden the court's ability to consider what types of projects would be eligible for 312 abatement agreements. Currently, you have very specific criteria. What we are stating and recommending the court consider modifying the criteria, too, is instead say that the court will identify projects of extraordinary economic development value, which include a number of factors that are listed there in the red line text. We would like to offer an amendment to what is currently presented on the screen. At the bottom of that screen, at the end of that existing paragraph, where the words of the criteria is as follows, and that and the language that follows on the next page have all been stricken. We would recommend modifying that to state instead that the court may consider the following terms in addition to the concepts listed above as follows. And then the red line language that includes investments of capital of at least 500 million in 3A all the way through 3E, which discuss employee healthcare benefits, would be would be put back into the policy. And then we would also ensure that all references to investments and jobs reflect that it could be existing as well as future planned phases of those individual projects. So if a company is coming in with three phases, and each phase is going to create 40 jobs, they would meet the four the the goal that the court identifies here of 100 full-time employees being created by the project as a whole. And so that language would be added to Section 3. And then additionally, under Section 4(c), we add language on the next page, please. The bottom there of the page that the recapture provisions and the that are listed there, which again allow the county to recapture tax abatement proceeds that were due to the county that were not approved, if in the event the company did not meet their goals identified in the separate 312 abatement agreement, the language here allows the county to, and the court specifically at its sole discretion, to modify the schedule and to make to allow for proportionate reductions. Again, just giving the court more flexibility in the ability to negotiate abatement agreements and economic development agreements with different different companies as we work through those different prospects. That concludes our presentation. Would now see if anyone has signed up to speak for public comment.
We do not have any speaker signed up.
That Commissioners would recommend that the court consider closing the public hearing, and then we can proceed to the action item where the court can discuss any questions that you may have on the...
I'll move to close. Oh, second.
Commissioner Ogin.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 18, postpone October 30, 2023 pursuant to Texas Tax Code Section 312.002. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed amendments to the El Paso County Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria effective October 30, 2023 through September 30, 2025. Opinion number 2521.
Good afternoon, again, Commissioners, Landeros and County Administration. Would recommend this is the action item as where the department would recommend that the court consider approving the amendments is offered, including the one that was made on the floor right now during the middle of the presentation to modify the language in Section 3 to allow for a little bit more definition on what some terms that the court may consider being, and again, to modify the recapture provisions to allow for proportionate reductions in abatement if the court chooses to and is at its sole discretion. So it asks for your favorable consideration. I'm available to take any questions the court may have.
Christina, how would the motion go?
Just do the motion to motion and a motion to approve the policies as presented with the noted amendments as made during your public hearing by Mr. Landeros. That would be your motion.
I'll make the I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Ogin.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leon, would you like to recess at this time?
Yes, we'll go ahead and recess for an hour.
Okay, Commissioners, Court will recess for one hour. It is 12:52 p.m.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine, too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutina, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos. Visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Majority of the students here in Torneo actually fall under the Torneo Independent School District, and that is where they go. They have four schools in total, including an early college high school as well.
And some of the things that they've been able to accomplish within this community is just so great, especially with the Torneo Independent School District. Everything from establishing programs like STEM, as well as different like art programs that they have, really, really cool. And this is for kids pre-K all the way through 12th grade. And one of the other things that I wanted to point out when it comes to Torneo ISD, one of the highest graduation rates in the entire region.
Wow, that's pretty amazing. And I know we have our KTSM 9 News reporter as well, Tani Davis. She talked to the superintendent of Torneo ISD as well, and she's going to tell us a little bit more about the school itself and their achievements. Hi there, Tani.
Hi there, Carla, Andy. As you know, Torneo may not be one of the biggest districts in the borderland, but that does not let them stop them from investing in their students' education.
Our mission is to continue to serve our children as if it was a big district.
With only 813 students across the district, Torneo ISD focuses on building back up the surrounding community. This includes opportunities for adults to learn English, apply for citizenship, and receive their high school diploma through a GED.
That is our way of moving our district forward, and what we like to say is moving our community, our learning community forward because we're the hub. We're the hub. We're the heart of the of the community.
Smaller district means less teachers and administration, but those who work for Torneo ISD say this creates a family where they can work together to give their students the best education.
We have mom and dad. We have brothers and sisters, aunts and uncles. We argue, we disagree. We come to a mutual agreement or disagreement, and then we're back to we're here for the kids.
There are plans in place to bring in new businesses to the area. The county has received the funding, but it is now up to the community to give input on what they would like to see.
That would definitely allow for more of the work jobs to be able to come into Torneo so that our people are able to come back, and not only that, people to move in and be able to get closer to the jobs that are going to be able to be offered here.
We also spoke with Vega Barrio about how they plan to expand their STEM programs across the district, and we'll have her answer later on KTSM 9 News at 6. For now, reporting from Torneo, Tani Davis, KTSM 9 News.
All right, Tani, thank you so much for that report. But Andy, you know, Torneo is more than just a pit stop. It's not just a place that you drive through. It's such a tight-knit community. I don't know if you noticed when we were driving here, I saw people sitting in their front yards. I think they were maybe playing cards, having a little cool beverage.
Dominoes.
I love that small-town vibe. It's just awesome.
And for the people that, you know, we've talked to, the community here that we've talked to, and kind of finding out reasons why to visit Torneo, or why they even live here, and it's that small-town vibe, right? And something else that I noticed when we kind of came in is the local little convenience store or supermarket, Don Pancho, that to me has small-town vibe written all over it, a community or an establishment that everyone kind of goes to for all their go-tos, all the necessities that you need.
Yeah, Andy, and all of these places have a story behind it, just like Don Pancho. Jonathan Martinez tells us the opportunity to open the store presented itself to his dad 10 years ago, and ever since, they have been serving the Torneo community. But he also tells us that it's not always about running his store and making money. It's about sharing with the community and supporting one another. Take a listen.
Well, I've been helping out with sports. There's they they have baseball teams here and soccer team. I sponsor a couple of them. I try to help them with what I can, even on schools. I've helped some of them with what I can.
This is oral medication, is a dew-wormer. So once you get home, you can go ahead and get it.
Oh, fantastic.
Is that it for?
So every Wednesday, we host a free clinic for the community, for our county constituents. We offer free spay and neuter surgeries, free age-appropriate vaccinations, and free microchips. We start our clinic at 6:00 a.m., all the way to 2:00 p.m. Our intake, we usually taken pets up to two years currently. This is right now tentatively until our new clinic is open, hopefully by October.
Say hello, everybody.
We've been doing it since about 2020. It's been super successful with our community members bringing in their pets to get spayed and neutered. A lot of the people don't have the resources to be able to pay for a spay surgery, a neuter surgery. Sometimes it's upwards of $500, so we're very glad to be able to offer that for free here. Just shoot us an email at spayneuter@epcounty.com, and with the services you need, your information, and the services that your pets need, and we'll get you on our servicing list.
There we go. Yeah, we got it, we got it.
Today, I was told by my wife that a friend of hers told her that their dogs just got vaccinated for free. So for her dogs, they were never vaccinated from birth. So I was like, you know what, let's go do it. They never got their shots. We weren't able to have the money to get it. So we heard about the free service, so we were like, let's go ahead and see how it goes and see how the dogs do. And they did pretty well for their first time. It is very important because I know with some dogs or some families that can't get vaccinated, pets, they end up passing away in a short time. Due to the fact that I was able to get my dogs to get the service, I'm really glad and happy about it.
In a few months, we're going to have a brand-new clinic on the Horizon Sparks area, and we're going to be able to do a lot more surgeries and vaccinations. So it's going to have a big impact on the citizens and the pets of the county. We're going to do a lot of surgeries, but also it's going to be a training facility for the for the new doctors and also for students because nowadays, they don't get a lot of hands-on practice on the veterinary schools. We're bringing students from Juarez to train and also to learn. And if they're interested in getting licensed here in the U.S., we're helping them. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of new doctors in the near future.
Torneo ISD was talking to us. They were joking around. Absolutely great vibe here, but I'll just let you take a look yourself.
Well, out here, living in the small towns, well, you enjoy the the culture, that kind of stuff, so it's really nice.
It's home. It's home. We're a family community here. You know, we're all one. Everybody knows everybody, and it's really tranquilo, it's calm here, you know? We all look out for each other. It's safe. I feel safe here.
It's awesome. It's awesome. The the community is pretty awesome. The people here.
That's it.
10 years ago, when we got here, we were new to the community. We're new to the people. They they've been pretty good. They're awesome.
Thing is that it's real quiet, peaceful out here in town. There's not much things to do, but it's quiet. It's not like the big cities that you go out there and live in the cities, and there's always things to do that you really don't have time to really sit down and enjoy your afternoons. So that's why I've been living here for 45 years now.
Hideaway Lakes is down the road. I know that much. El Paso's not that far from here. We're like 20 minutes from El Paso.
We're like 20 minutes from El Paso.
Like 90% of what I have here is local.
Thanks to our Sean Feliz for that wonderful report. I love how one of the residents said, "It's just an awesome, awesome, awesome community." Hey, I agree. Very simple. Well said.
Our official name is Illumina Public Library, El Paso County's all digital library. The reason that it's named Illumina is because libraries illuminate. They bring to light information. We have eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, a streaming service to watch movies and to listen to music.
What are we trying to do?
We're trying to see the, what are total, total remaining.
We have programming here at the Aguadulce Community Center. We have computer literacy classes, conversational English classes.
B2.
Mm-hmm.
So it's B3.
And we recently started going over the Microsoft suite. So Microsoft Word. Today I did Microsoft Excel.
You speak.
Do you speak?
Do you speak?
So she checks out a tablet and she checks out a hotspot to use at home for herself and for her kids.
Estoy tratando de aprender el inglés para, pues tratar de ayudar a mis niños porque pues yo no sé nada el inglés.
We also have a lot of people using the services from home.
Pues ella lo usa, el internet lo usa porque pues traen el Chrome, se llama de la escuela y tiene que hacer tareas.
At first, it was a little bit difficult to explain the concept that it's an all digital library.
But yeah, people are understanding. This is the future. This is necessary if you want to continue to stay relevant.
The hotspot and the tablet is to help bridge that gap and to give all of the folks out here access to internet.
And it's going to be one of those accessible things that makes the entire county more equitable. And of course, it allows people to be participating in things they might have not been able to do so prior to this new initiative.
Que bueno que ahí está ayuda porque es una enorme, enorme ayuda y pues es una oportunidad muy grande que nos dan de poder ayudarnos a nosotros.
This is our website and right here on the front it says, "Click here to sign up for LiveRicard."
So it's free to everybody who lives in El Paso County, regardless if you live in the city or not.
Welcome back to KTSM 9 News at 6, our Small Town Spotlight live from Torneo High School. I'm standing here on the football field and the athletics programs at Torneo have been some of the best that they've seen in recent memory, the last few years. A golden era, if you will, of Coyote athletics, from state championships to the first Division One recruits in school history. Let's take a look at the last couple of years at Torneo's athletics programs. The last two years of athletics at Torneo High School have been arguably some of the best in school history across multiple sports. On the diamond, the baseball program has won at least one playoff series in each of the last three years. Perhaps the best team in Torneo history went to the 3A regional quarterfinals in 2021. That year was huge for the Coyotes. Lisbeth Fieto won the 3A silver medal in the shot put at the UIL State meet, then became the first Torneo athlete to ever earn a Division One scholarship signing with UTEP.
It's a great honor because it's hard to inspire girls here because they think only guys could make it far in life. But I'm trying to change that, to make girls believe that we could do it. It doesn't mean that just because we're a girl, doesn't mean that we don't have the strength as a guy.
The next year, the track was even kinder to the Coyotes as Angel Torres medaled twice at the 2022 State Track Meet. Torres finished with a bronze in the 3200 meters. Then later that night, he became the first Torneo athlete to ever win a state championship in any sport, taking gold in the 1600.
I remember Coach told me right before the race, "At 250 meters, no one can outkick you." So I thought about that and I waited till the last hundred and I went and it hurt so bad, but it was worth it. It feels good to represent Torneo and all of El Paso.
Daniel Romero followed in Torres's footsteps this year at State, running the 3200 and the 1600 meters, finishing sixth and ninth respectively in those events. On the hardwood, the Torneo Boys Basketball Team spent much of the 2022-23 season ranked in Class 3A in the state of Texas. The Coyotes rolled through much of their season going undefeated in district play. They ultimately finished the season 30 and 2.
To be state recognized, I mean, that's a big accomplishment, but it's like a big target in our back as well. I mean, we have a standard. We already met that center, so we just got to go up from there.
They're a small town with a lot of fight and Torneo hopes to continue the success they've had into the coming years.
The Honorable Robert J. Galván County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's Domestic Relations Office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's Access to Justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information, accurate, current, freely accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's 8th District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The 8th Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman Judge Robert J. Galván in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney and it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be successful in accomplishing what they need to do within the court system.
The two-floor library facility has a comprehensive collection of print and electronic resources covering federal, regional, state, and local jurisdictions, conference rooms to accommodate attorneys and their clients, or for meeting space. There are computers with webcam capabilities and private study rooms. Printing copying services are available to the public for a fee. There is also technology on hand to scan and fax documents.
This is an access to justice initiative. This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands who live in El Paso because without that, without their ability to have access to information, access to books, access to computers, access to be able to use the justice system, they're left out in the cold.
The Law Library is a great location to access important legal resources to include published cases, forms, court rules, practice guides, plus historical legal books not available digitally, while guided by experienced staff.
We're opening, we have computers that you can use, we have printers.
Law Library staff performs outreach in order to help ensure the most vulnerable in our community is aware of the services offered. The Law Library staff is also key in providing the public in-person information on the history of the county courthouse by providing guided tours to the public.
You can see she's not blindfolded and throughout history, there's been times where she was blindfolded.
The Law Library is open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM weekdays. For more information, call 915-546-2245 or email eplawlibrary@epcounty.com.
You will find the library to be a welcoming and judgment-free place where you will be met with dignity, respect, and discretion.
The Robert J. Galván County Law Library is committed to facilitate access to legal information for the citizens of El Paso County.
.....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Majority of the students here in Torneo actually fall under the Torneo Independent School District and that is where they go. They have four schools in total, including an early college high school as well.
And some of the things that they've been able to accomplish within this community is just so great, especially with the Torneo Independent School District. Everything from establishing programs like STEM as well as different like art programs that they have, really, really cool. And this is for kids pre-K all the way through 12th grade. And one of the other things that I wanted to point out when it comes to Torneo ISD, one of the highest graduation rates in the entire region.
That's pretty amazing. And I know we have our KTSM 9 News reporter as well, Toni Davis. She talked to the superintendent of Torneo ISD as well, and she's going to tell us a little bit more about the school itself and their achievements. Hi there Toni.
Hi there Carla, Andy. As you know, Torneo may not be one of the biggest districts in the borderland, but that does not let them stop them from investing in their students' education.
Our mission is to continue to serve our children as if it was a big district.
With only 813 students across the district, Torneo ISD focuses on building back up the surrounding community. This includes opportunities for adults to learn English, apply for citizenship, and receive their high school diploma through a GED.
That is our way of moving our district forward and what we like to say is moving our community, our learning community forward because we're the hub. We're the hub. We're the heart of the, of the community.
Smaller district means less teachers and administration, but those who work for Torneo ISD say this creates a family where they can work together to give their students the best education.
We have mom and dad. We have brothers and sisters, aunts and uncles. We argue, we disagree, we come to a mutual agreement or disagreement, and then we're back to we're here for the kids.
There are plans in place to bring in new businesses to the area. The county has received the funding, but it is now up to the community to give input on what they would like to see.
That would definitely allow for more of the work jobs to be able to come into Torneo so that our people are able to come back. And not only that, people to move in and be able to get closer to the jobs that are going to be able to be offered here.
We also spoke with Vega Barrio about how they plan to expand their STEM programs across the district and we'll have her answer later on KTSM 9 News at 6. For now, reporting from Torneo, Toni Davis, KTSM 9 News.
All right Toni, thank you so much for that report. But Andy, you know, Torneo is more than just a pit stop. It's not just a place that you drive through. It's such a tight knit community. I don't know if you noticed when we were driving here, I saw people sitting in their front yards. I think they were maybe playing cards, having a little cool beverage. I love that small town vibe. It's just awesome.
And for the people that, you know, we've talked to, the community here that we've talked to and kind of finding out reasons why to visit Torneo or why they even live here and it's that small town vibe, right?
Exactly.
Something else that I noticed when we kind of came in is the local little convenience store or supermarket, Don Pancho. That to me has small town vibe written all over it, a community or an establishment that everyone kind of goes to for all their go-tos, all the necessities that you need.
Yeah Andy, and all of these places have a story behind it, just like Don Pancho. Jonathan Martinez tells us the opportunity to open the store presented itself to his dad 10 years ago and ever since they have been serving the Torneo community. But he also tells us that it's not always about running his store and making money. It's about sharing with the community and supporting one another. Take a listen.
Well, I've been helping out with sports. There's, they, they have baseball teams here and soccer team. I sponsor a couple of them. I try to help them with, with what I can. Even on schools, I've, I've helped some of them with what I can. I try to help them with what I can, even on schools. I've helped some of them with what I can.
This is oral medication. It's a dewormer. So once you get home, you can go ahead and get it.
Oh, fantastic.
Is that it for?
So every Wednesday, we host a free clinic for the community, for our county constituents. We offer free spay and neuter surgeries, free age-appropriate vaccinations, and free microchips. We start our clinic at 6:00 AM all the way to 2:00 PM. Our intake, we usually taken pets up to two years currently. This is right now tentatively until our new clinic is open, hopefully by October.
Say hello, everybody.
We've been doing it since about 2020. It's been super successful with our community members bringing in their pets to get spayed and neutered. A lot of the people don't have the resources to be able to pay for a space surgery, a neuter surgery. Sometimes it's upwards of $500, so we're very glad to be able to offer that for free here. Just shoot us an email at spayneuter@epcounty.com and with the services you need, your information, and the services that your pets need, and we'll get you on our servicing list.
There we go. Yeah, we got it. We got it.
Today I was told by my wife that a friend of hers told her that their dogs just got vaccinated for free. So for her dogs, they were never vaccinated from birth. So I was like, you know what? Let's go do it. They never got their shots. We weren't able to have the money to get it. So we heard about the free service, so we were like, let's go ahead and see how it goes and see how the dogs do. And they did pretty well for their first time. It is very important because I know with some dogs or some families that can't get vaccinated, pets, they end up passing away in a short time. Do the fact that I was able to get my dogs to get the service, I'm really glad and happy about it.
In a few months, we're going to have a brand-new clinic on the Horizon Sparks area. And we're going to be able to do a lot more surgeries and vaccinations. So it's going to have a big impact on the citizens and the pets of the county. We're going to do a lot of surgeries, but also it's going to be a training facility for the for the new doctors and also for students. Because nowadays, they don't get a lot of hands-on practice on the veterinary schools. We're bringing students from Juarez to train and also to learn. And if they're interested in getting licensed here in the US, we're helping them. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of new doctors in the near future.
Torneo ISD was talking to us. They were joking around. Absolutely great vibe here, but I'll just let you take a look yourself.
Well, out here, living in small towns, well, you enjoy the culture, that kind of stuff. So it's really nice.
It's home. It's home. We're a family community here. You know, we're all one. Everybody knows everybody and it's really tranquilo, it's calm here, you know? We all look out for each other. It's safe. I feel safe here.
It's awesome. It's awesome. The community is pretty awesome. The people here. 10 years ago, when we got here, we were new to the community. We were new to the people. They've been pretty good. They're awesome.
Thing is that it's real quiet, peaceful out here in town. There's not much things to do, but it's quiet. It's not like the big cities that you go out there and live in the cities. And there's always things to do that you really don't have time to really sit down and enjoy your afternoons. So that's why I've been living here for 45 years now.
Hideaway Lakes is down the road. I know that much. El Paso is not that far from here, like 20 minutes from El Paso.
Like 90% of what I have here is local. Yeah, 90%.
Thanks to our Sean Feliz for that wonderful report. I love how one of the residents says, "It's just an awesome, awesome, awesome community." Hey, I agree. Very simple. Well said.
Our official name is Illumina Public Library, El Paso County's all-digital library. The reason that it's named Illumina is because libraries illuminate. They bring to light information. We have eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, a streaming service to watch movies and to listen to music.
What are we trying to do? We're trying to see the what our total remaining.
We have programming here at the Aguadulce Community Center. We have computer literacy classes, conversational English classes.
B2 plus B3.
And we recently started going over the Microsoft suite, so Microsoft Word. Today I did Microsoft Excel.
You speak.
Do you speak?
Do you speak?
Do you speak?
So she checks out a tablet and she checks out a hotspot to use at home for herself and for her kids.
Estoy tratando de aprender el inglés para, pues tratar de ayudar a mis niños porque pues yo no sé nada en inglés.
We also have a lot of people using the services from home.
Pues ella lo usa el internet, lo usa porque pues traen el Chrome, se llama, de la escuela, y tiene que hacer tareas.
At first, it was a little bit difficult to explain the concept that it's an all-digital library.
But yeah, people are understanding. This is the future. This is necessary if you want to continue to stay relevant.
The hotspot and the tablet is to help bridge that gap and to give all of the folks out here access to internet.
And it's going to be one of those accessible things that makes the entire county more equitable. And of course, it allows people to be participating in things they might have not been able to do so prior to this new initiative.
Que bueno que ahí está ayuda porque es una enorme, enorme ayuda. Y pues es una oportunidad muy grande que nos dan de poder ayudarnos a nosotros.
This is our website. And right here on the front, it says, "Click here to sign up for a LiveRecard."
So it's free to everybody who lives in El Paso County, regardless if you live in the city or not.
Welcome back to KTSM 9 News at 6, our Small Town Spotlight live from Torneo High School. I'm standing here on the football field. And the athletics programs at Torneo have been some of the best that they've seen in recent memory, the last few years. A golden era, if you will, of Coyote athletics, from state championships to the first Division One recruits in school history. Let's take a look at the last couple of years at Torneo's athletics programs. The last two years of athletics at Torneo High School have been arguably some of the best in school history across multiple sports. On the diamond, the baseball program has won at least one playoff series in each of the last three years. Perhaps the best team in Torneo history went to the 3A Regional Quarterfinals in 2021. That year was huge for the Coyotes. Lisbeth Fieto won the 3A silver medal in the shot put at the UIL State meet, then became the first Torneo athlete to ever earn a Division One scholarship, signing with UTEP.
It's a great honor because it's hard to inspire girls here because they think only guys could make it far in life. But I'm trying to change that, to make girls believe that we could do it. It doesn't mean that just because we're a girl, doesn't mean that we don't have the strength as a guy.
The next year, the track was even kinder to the Coyotes as Angel Torres medaled twice at the 2022 State Track Meet. Torres finished with a bronze in the 3200 meters. Then later that night, he became the first Torneo athlete to ever win a state championship in any sport, taking gold in the 1600.
I remember Coach told me right before the race, "At 250 meters, no one can outkick you." So I thought about that and I waited till the last 100 and I went and it hurt so bad, but it was worth it. It feels good to represent Torneo and all of El Paso.
Daniel Romero followed in Torres's footsteps this year at state, running the 3200 and the 1600 meters, finishing sixth and ninth respectively in those events. On the hardwood, the Torneo Boys Basketball Team spent much of the 2022-23 season ranked in Class 3A in the state of Texas. The Coyotes rolled through much of their season going undefeated in district play. They ultimately finished the season 30-2.
To be state-recognized, I mean, that's a big accomplishment, but it's like a big target in our back as well. I mean, we have a standard. We already met that standard, so we just got to go up from there.
They're a small town with a lot of fight, and Torneo hopes to continue the success they've had into the coming years.
The Honorable Robert J. Galván County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's Domestic Relations Office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's access to justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource. Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information, accurate, current, freely accessible information, which you will find here. Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's Eighth District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The Eighth Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman Judge Robert J. Galván in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney. And it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Sibios and welcome to Sibios Honey. Right here, we have some pictures from another family business. They're the ones that take care of the bees. They're the ones that, you know, make sure that they're doing good. And these are the few pictures. And then right here, we also have all these pictures. They're just random pictures that we found as well. So here's our table. We have a setup for our quartz, our pints, our one-pounders, some stirs. So this is the new products that we do have. They are soaps. They are made with our honey. We have honey oat milk, lavender, rosemary, eucalyptus, and pine forest. Not only do we have honey and soap, we also have honey sticks. They look like this. They're also good for coffees, for teas, for just random little snacks that you want throughout the day. So we have this tank. This tank is usually full of honey. So what we do with this tank is we do pour our jars, which I said, like the quartz, the pints, and the gallons as well. So we have this cheesecloth here. This is to catch the bees, the dirt, and all that, just so we can pour it into the jars so we can serve the customers. All these barrels over here are full of honey. Thank you all for stopping by. I hope you enjoyed our tour. Don't forget to stop by here at Sibios Honey in Fabians on Main Street.
Our official name is Illumina Public Library, El Paso County's all-digital library. The reason that it's named Illumina is because libraries illuminate. They bring to light information. We have eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, a streaming service to watch movies and to listen to music.
What are we trying to do? We're trying to see the what our total remaining.
We have programming here at the
We have programming here at the Agua Dulce Community Center. We have computer literacy classes, conversational English classes.
B2.
Yeah.
So it's B3.
And we recently started going over the Microsoft suite, so Microsoft Word. Today, I did Microsoft Excel.
You speak.
Do you speak?
Do you speak?
So she checks out a tablet, and she checks out a hotspot to use at home for herself and for her kids.
Estoy tratando de aprender el inglés para, pues tratar de ayudar a mis niños porque pues yo no sé nada en inglés.
We also have a lot of people using their services from home.
Pues ella lo usa en internet, lo usa porque pues traen el Chrome, se llama, de la escuela, y tiene que hacer tareas.
At first, it was a little bit difficult to explain the concept that it's an all-digital library.
But yeah, people are understanding. This is the future. This is necessary if you want to continue to stay relevant.
The hotspot and the tablet is to help bridge that gap and to give all of the folks out here access to internet.
And it's going to be one of those accessible things that makes the entire county more equitable. And of course, it allows people to be participating in things they might have not been able to do so prior to this new initiative.
Que bueno que ahí está ayuda, porque es una enorme, enorme ayuda. Y pues es una oportunidad muy grande que nos dan de poder ayudarnos a nosotros.
This is our website, and right here on the front, it says, "Click here to sign up for LiveRicard."
So it's free to everybody who lives in El Paso County, regardless if you live in the city or not.
We talked a little bit in our 5 o'clock hour about a burger joint that we have to do.
Pops Burger, of course. There you go, see, she knows.
Everyone here in Fabians knows all about it, but how about we let the burger do the speaking.
Yeah, let's find out why it's called Pops Burger and know it has nothing to do with Dad. Check this out.
My sister opened it in 1983. It came about because of our last name, Pop Pan. People really didn't know how to pronounce it, so she got the nickname in school, Pops. My special after games, everybody comes to eat. That's where we're known from. Even places out of town, they come and they want to enjoy our food or get a good burger plan. They get to check out what Pops is all about.
What is Pops all about?
Good old-fashioned hamburger, family-friendly, well-known. We treat you like family, like we know you. So the small town adds to us because that's what makes it the family environment. We love what we do, and it shows in our cookie. We're going on our 40-year anniversary this November. Hopefully, one of these days, we're able to expand, maybe possibly a food truck, maybe drive-through, tell about the passion and enjoying doing what you do. And that's exactly what we do. We love what we do.
The Honorable Robert J. Galván County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's Domestic Relations Office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's access to justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information. Accurate, current, freely accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's 8th District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The 8th Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman Judge Robert J. Galván in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney. And it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be successful in accomplishing what they need to do within the court system.
The two-floor library facility has a comprehensive collection of print and electronic resources covering federal, regional, state, and local jurisdictions, conference rooms to accommodate attorneys and their clients, or for meeting space. There are computers with webcam capabilities and private study rooms. Printing copying services are available to the public for a fee. There is also technology on hand to scan and fax documents.
This is an access-to-justice initiative. This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands who live in El Paso, because without that, without their ability to have access to information, access to books, access to computers, access to be able to use the justice system, they're left out in the cold.
The Law Library is a great location to access important legal resources to include published cases, forms, court rules, practice guides, plus historical legal books not available digitally, while guided by experienced staff.
We're open, we have computers that you can use, we have printers.
Law Library staff performs outreach in order to help ensure the most vulnerable in our community is aware of the services offered. The Law Library staff is also key in providing the public in-person information on the history of the county courthouse by providing guided tours to the public.
You can see she's not blindfolded, and throughout history, there's been times where she was blindfolded.
The Law Library is open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays. For more information, call 915-546-2245, or email eplawlibrary@epcounty.com.
You will find the library to be a welcoming and judgment-free place, where you will be met with dignity, respect, and discretion.
The Robert J. Galván County Law Library is committed to facilitate access to legal information for the citizens of El Paso County.
We're live from Fabians High School having a grand old time. The mariachi band is playing. The kids are actually doing their final school activities of the year here. The parents are all here getting a chance to check it out. It's been an absolutely awesome event. And behind me, you can see this scoreboard at the Fabians High School football stadium. It's named after Amador Villalobos Jr., the athletic complex named after him. Now, he is synonymous here in Fabians for everything that he did. Unfortunately, he passed away in the 1960s due to an accident during a football game, but they have honored his memory for years here at Fabians. They even have an award named after him. For more on his life and legacy, here is Sam Guzman.
Inside Fabians High School's fieldhouse, you'll find a showcase dedicated to a Wildcat legend.
He was like the model child, straight A student. He played every single sport, was a good kid at home.
He played football, basketball, baseball, ran track, he did everything.
Amador Villalobos Jr. was a great athlete and an even better person. That's why when his life was taken away at 17 years old, it impacted many. In November of 1969, Villalobos Jr. died after being in a two-week coma after he sustained a head injury during a high school football game against Cathedral. It was a tragic event that still lives in the memories of many.
I miss him today, and in 53 years. And I still bring tears to my eyes.
But through tragedy comes light. The Amador Villalobos Jr. Fighting Heart Award was created.
It was established in the early '70s, given to the player who demonstrated the most heart. And this year, my family and I decided to start a scholarship.
You have to have good character, have to have outstanding values, have to be all about Fabians High School. The young man that we chose this year exemplifies all those things and more.
This year's winner of the award and the first recipient of the scholarship was Derek Ramirez, a senior football star who will play college ball at Sol Ross State and who is also related to the man whose name is on the award.
It makes me happy, like extremely happy, because he was my cousin. So in a way, it makes me motivated, it makes me happy that I can continue that tradition of people that were awarded with that award.
Remembering Amador doesn't stop there. You can also find his name on the school's fieldhouse and on the football field's scoreboard.
I don't think there's a more appropriate name for our stadium than Amador Villalobos Jr. He was perfect. I mean, he was just a wonderful, wonderful young man.
We're pretty proud to see the signs, to see everything, the scoreboard. Seeing all these kids, I mean, they represent what he was, what Amador was, and hopefully it can continue on for many years to come.
Sam Guzman, KTSM 9 Sports.
Students working alongside with NASA programs. It's just so incredible. And apparently, Fabians ISD offers some really incredible programs to get students ready for college. I mean, they're already ahead of the game.
Ahead of the game, for sure.
Absolutely. So let's go ahead and toss it over to Tawny, Tawny Davis, as she's going to talk a little bit more about what this incredible district has to offer.
Andy, Monica, Fabians High School tells their students to reach for their stars. And with their early college program as well as their rocket program, you could see here, they're able to even go beyond that. And so with their early college program, they are able to graduate with their associate's degree, which allows them to get college credit. The school also has the rocket program for kids who want to focus on engineering. In that class, they build a rocket from scratch while learning team building and programming. One of the students we spoke with, who is currently in the class, is grateful that the school has given him a glimpse of what his future could be.
It's really setting me up for my future, because I plan on becoming an engineer. And being here with Ms. Manuelas and the engineering program, we really get to experience all different sorts of engineering programs, and it really shows us different things of what we really want to do.
Being a smaller district, the students get the more one-on-one instruction from their teachers, with the students feel like they are more comfortable if and when they need help. Now, like I said, Fabians already has so many success stories, but are hoping they can have even more with both their early college program and the rocket program. I'm Tawny Davis, back to you all.
Jessica Cohen.
Commissioner's Court has reconvened to regular open session. We are on item 10 from county administration. Item number 10, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the service agreement with Aliviana Inc. for opioid treatment wraparound support services to address opioid use disorder for 24 months from the date of signature in the amount of $50,000. Funds are available in SR Opioid Settlement Contract Services General, contract number 2023-0847. And I'd like to read in item number 11 as well, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the service agreements with Aliviana Inc. in the amount of $25,000. Contract number 2023-0846 and the El Paso Alliance in the amount of $50,000. Contract number 2023-0848 to purchase and administer Narcan where needed in the community to address the opioid crisis for a 12-month period from the date of signature. Funds are available in SR Opioid Settlement Contract Services General. And we also have one speaker signed up for these items.
Okay, thank you. Joel.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Leon, Commissioner Olgin, Commissioner Stout. Very pleased to present these opportunities to you this afternoon. Just as a little background from this, this is money that came in from the opioid, our first tranche of opioid settlement funds that were unrestricted from the settlement that the county engaged in. Just a little background on this, I'll keep this brief, but since 1999, I looked at the National Institute of Health website, and I added up the number of deaths of prescription opioids since 1999, over 225,000 deaths in the United States. That's more than World War I, the Korean War, and Vietnam combined. And so the number continues to grow exponentially. I had, I worked with Dr. Mario Rascón and Jacob Miles to analyze data in El Paso. In the last two or three years, we've seen an over 50% increase in overdose deaths in El Paso. So I wanted to also thank Commissioner Stout and his staff for helping coordinate some of these meetings with our frontline providers, because this is a very important topic. We are hearing anecdotally about the issues in El Paso, but hearing from our frontline providers and hearing the need for Narcan and also treatment services became clear that we need to enhance this. So what the purpose of this is to fulfill what you already approved back in August, and that was to provide $125,000 to nonprofit grant opportunities. This is that step. We got three responses. They were all three good, we thought, from two different providers. What you're seeing is Aliviana, who will provide treatment for 20 opioid-addicted people for up to a year. And that's, and also administer 25,000 in Narcan, and then the El Paso Alliance to administer 50,000 in Narcan over the next 12 months. And I also reached out to UTEP to potentially partner with us, to research this, and they are interested. We're having a coordinated meeting tomorrow. Met with them on Friday, another meeting tomorrow to have them actually research the outcomes, because there are some, we would like to know the impacts of this outreach. And so there's a lot of interesting research questions that can arise from this. So I just want to lay these out to you and/or recommend that you approve these. Also, we do have Aliviana here, Aliviana staffer here to show their support. They don't necessarily want to say anything, but I'm sure they'd be willing to if you want to hear from them. And also, I believe we have Don Dominguez from the El Paso Alliance online as well, who may want to make some comments about these opportunities. But I am thankful for the partnerships, also the county attorney's office for helping us with this unique opportunity in the court and their aggressive approach to this litigation that has laid out these opportunities for El Paso. So these are unique. These are unique awards, and I think we will be able to see a tangible outcome from these and really enhance this. And also, there's, just to be clear, there's a whole bunch more money coming from the state in the form of state-administered grants, of settlement grants. So this will hopefully bridge the gap with some of the needs before that money becomes accessible to our nonprofits and to the county, for that matter. But right now, it's not available, so, but we do have this money available, so that can help get things started right away. More opportunities will come, I think, through state settlement grants that are in the works. So with that, do you have any questions for me on these?
Yeah, I've got a question. Those 225,000 deaths, they're strictly from opioids, not including fentanyl?
No, no, I think that would probably include fentanyl. But, but no, actually, as long as it was prescription. So I just, I eliminated the illegal drug use overdoses. I just looked at prescription overdoses since 1999. That's 225,000. That was through '21, so that doesn't count '22 and '23, which is probably another 200,000 deaths.
Data from what I understand that I've looked at, they will consider fentanyl as a prescription drug. I was just at a conference for NAMI this weekend, and they were talking about, you know, some of the numbers. So it's important to, I guess, to discern between the two, but, but...
Yeah, fentanyl, there's a fentanyl spray that sometimes is prescribed, but it's really unbelievable, the amount of damage that has been done and really, you know, criminal behavior from pharmaceutical companies, that it's taken decades to sort through the carnage. I personally, in my career, for 25 years, have been dealing with this in one way or the other. I know we've all been impacted in one way or the other. Somebody we know has been impacted by this.
And the Narcan's especially targeting the fentanyl?
Fentanyl or any sort of opioid overdose. So it could be prescription overdose, it could be a heroin overdose, it could be a fentanyl overdose. It'll... It'll, it'll, it's pretty effective at reversing that, but, and our, you know, we do have, I saw Don and Mr. Ben Bass are here as well, and they could, they could probably fill in those gaps if you'd like them to answer any questions.
And I've got to say, you know, a lot of, a couple of you I know have been here all morning, sitting in our very comfortable lobby benches there. So, you know, the floor is open to you if you'd like to say anything.
Don't be shy.
Luis Teniseros, I'm from administration with Aliviana. I'm the business development coordinator, and I helped write the grant. And the staff, they're the frontline, and they'll probably have more of the technical answers for you. But some of the things that we do want to consider, or that I want to put forward, it's also, for the county, a lot of the services we provide already, so it's at no cost for the Narcan distribution. That's something that we already provide the training, we have certified training, personnel, staff, so we do that already. But the county is going to supplement that by giving us those funds for the Narcan. And that's something that, you know, a lot of people don't have access to, so that's something that we are already in those communities, we're already training those, we're going to be working throughout the sector, so with law enforcement and school administrators, right? So something that we're also considering is for the schools to also have access to that, or have the training for that, okay? And one of the things that we identify with our regional needs assessment is that the rural, so I know we represent like not just El Paso, the urban, but also the surrounding area. So them identifying that also these rural areas are also in need of that. So that's something that we've also targeted, identified, and we're going to be working, we're already in those places, but we're going to target that, so that way they have the training, they have the personnel. Now we can give them that Narcan, right? So it's not just the training in and of itself, we provide that service, have been providing that service. So now we just have that Narcan. Now with the wraparound treatment, that also is not just treating the opioid, but also giving them services for recovery, transportation, as well as making sure that the family support, right? Because it's not just the individual that deals with it, a lot of times, they have family, right? And they are also victims of this as well. So these services are going to provide for all of them in that sense.
And the Narcan, I'm sorry, is distributed to agencies and entities, not individual families?
Uh, no, not initially, so we're going to provide those trainings. Some of them might come to us, but we're also trying to spread it out to where we're providing the training, because we're thinking about this long-term as well, right? We hope this is the first step in giving us those funds, because the opioid abatement money, that's going to be, you know, it's going to be held up for a while, and there's even bankruptcy proceedings for that, for the pharmaceutical companies. So even then, it's going to be a while before then. So with the county, what we're also doing is having those trainings, so that way when we get more of the slack, more of that, we already have the training in place, so that we're providing it for them, so they have the training. So even if they get that Narcan from somewhere else, or we're providing it to them, they'll have the training that we provided by our certified trainers to be able to administer and use that Narcan.
And it, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. Is there a window from the time somebody overdoses to the time they get the Narcan, where it's still, you're within a safe period?
And that's more of a technical issue, but I mean.
Hi, my name's Carolina Gonzalez, and I oversee our outpatient services at Aliviana. And that includes our youth and adult outpatient, our homeless services. A lot of the questions that you're asking, going back to the Narcan, and as our partners from Recovery Alliance have said, you know, there's a very short window. And we do distribute Narcan to families, but we also have to give them the training on how to use them, to our clients in our opioid treatment clinic, which we have. And like Lee was saying earlier, we do, we do receive state funding for medication-assisted treatment, which provides medications such as methadone, buprenorphine, vivitrol. But what these dollars are doing is helping us provide wraparound. So all the other things that the families are very much in need of, the clients need, you know, if you have a patient that has diabetes, you don't just give them the medication and send them on his way. You know, there's education on how to eat a healthy diet, you know, how to change lifestyle, and it's the same way with addiction. You know, we can provide the medication, but the families need more. And so we really appreciate that the county is giving us these wraparound dollars, that the county is providing the funding to purchase Narcan, so we can distribute it, you know, not only to first responders, but to families that have someone struggling with addiction, even friends of friends, you know, friends of other people using, so that in a case of an overdose, there's chances that that person has a chance to live, live to see another day, and hopefully, you know, seek treatment and recovery.
No, I was, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I think, I'm very happy to see you all partnering with the county to do this, both agencies, and I know there's just a lot of misinformation out there about Narcan as well, you know, especially I've heard amongst like first responders and the police, they're afraid to carry it, because, you know, if they touch the person who's overdosed, or if they've touched, if they touch the Narcan, they can also, you know, overdose or have a negative effect, but Narcan, even if you give Narcan to somebody who's not overdosed on an opioid, it's not going to hurt that person.
No, it's not going to hurt. The Narcan doesn't hurt. The substance that can hurt is of course the fentanyl, you know, and then, and so, like you say, misinformation, you know, and we are seeing a higher rise in fentanyl use. In the past, our clinic used to serve primarily people that were addicted to heroin. And now, our younger generation is coming in, and they're choosing fentanyl over heroin. Even, you know, we hear stories from our own clients where cartels are no longer bothering with the heroin, because they have to grow the plant, you know, they have to cultivate it, et cetera, where the fentanyl, you can just mix it up in a lab, and, you know, and originally, you know, fentanyl was like just a touch, and it could be deadly. And cartels are getting savvy to the fact where they're watering down their fentanyl so that people can continue to use, and it's more addictive. And like I said earlier, you know, I oversee our youth outpatient, and I can tell you that before COVID, our numbers ranged like 200 and some referrals a year for substance use treatment for youth. This past year after COVID, we received over 500 referrals in 11 months just for substance use from youth. We're seeing a lot of severe mental health with our youth stemming either from substance use, a combination, or they're using the substances to deal with a lot of the mental health issues that they're having. And our, and the cases are a lot more severe. It used to be, you know, depression, anxiety from schoolwork, from peers, and now it's just, you know, really severe cases of mental health along with the substance use.
Well, you know, I'm happy that the county is also, you know, trying to help create more awareness about this issue, trying to bring about more education with the partnerships that we're embarking upon with y'all. You know, I think also among certain groups, there's a lot of reluctance to want to make Narcan more available, make fentanyl testing strips available. Like right now, in the state of Texas, they're considered like drug paraphernalia, and, you know, we need to continue to advocate to change those rules as well. You know, people will argue, oh, if you allow these things to be around, then you're just, you know, fomenting the use, but that's not the case. We need to be able to treat people, but we can't treat them if they're dead.
Right, right. And so I appreciate again you all listening to us, and I appreciate the county wanting to take part in this endeavor for all of us as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Have other speakers?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ben Bass, and I am the director of the Recovery Alliance of El Paso. We're an organization of people in recovery from alcoholism and drug addiction, along with our family members and community allies. We've been providing peer-to-peer recovery support services for people seeking to recover since 2002. We organized originally in 1998 to begin to fight stigma and discrimination for people in recovery. When, when the opioid epidemic became really, really pervasive, we set out, we, the Recovery Alliance, set out to reach into our community to find people that would help us to do outreach. And, and we set out to formulate an answer to the opioid epidemic. We are working with Aliviana, they have, they have medication-assisted treatment. We have two large outreach centers. We have one on Yandel, close to downtown, and the other in the Triangle area in northeast. We have, we have been providing what we call harm reduction services since 2019. And like Commissioner Stout was saying, people can't recover if they're dead. So we do a lot of outreach. Our, we have, in our centers, we have over 1,000 people a week walking into the centers for our outreach activities. We have tens, we reach out to tens of thousands of El Pasoans every year. Our workers have reversed hundreds of overdoses so far this year using Narcan that we got to buy somewhere. And we are very grateful that you all are, we hope that you all will help us in that effort. The more Narcan we get, the more we can use.
And how's Narcan administered?
Nasally.
So they don't have to be conscious, right?
Well, there's, there's two different forms. There's intramuscular, and there's also nasal. We have some intramuscular Narcan, but we have to train people a little more to be able to administer it. So we prefer the nasal, and they do not have to be conscious. I mean, we find somebody on the verge of death on the sidewalk, we can administer that, and they come around.
Very, it's fascinating, thank you.
I'm Adam Dominguez, I'm the program director for Recovery Alliance, and I manage the two centers that Mr. Bass just referred. We opened up about five years ago at the Yandel and Noble, and we were just peer-to-peer, and we feel that peer-to-peer allows the stigma to, to open up the individuals, to have a more honest discussion as to what is really going on in their lives. So we do have a walk-in, and then we also provide the wraparound services that we talked about. On our site, we have coordinated entry workers, we also have Texas Legal Aid to help them with IDs, and, and we also have continuous weekly outreach to homeless camps. We have personally administered, through our staff, over 400 of the Narcans that I know of, but I know we've done more, and those are just save lives just right off the bat, you know, in our presence, because people feel safe coming to our centers. Many of them have been on-site, where we have to administer the Narcan, they're on-site, or they'll run to our center and say, a friend needs help, and we're on-site to help them. So we're blessed. When we first opened four, five years ago, we received two pallets. We didn't even take count of the nasal Narcan. And so we started our distribution five years ago, including to the sheriffs and the police department back then. But little by little, as the ARPA funding and all of the other funding started to dry up, our Narcan supply started to decrease. We did also work through our community partners like Aliviana and other outreach services to distribute the Narcan to them. So we were instrumental in setting up the original Narcan distribution in our community. And we started to get a little concerned, because the ARPA funding died, and we were unable to keep up with the demand of the Narcan that we had accustomed to give out. Of course, it always comes with education. We didn't want to do the intramuscular, we prefer the nasal. And just for your information, chief, it's, it looks like a Vicks dispenser, you just slide in the nose and press, and it just dispenses the Narcan into their nose. We've had to administer as many as seven to an individual to wake them up. Of course, they're always angry as I'll get out, because we ruined their high, but they didn't realize that how close to death they were. Fentanyl is insidious and deadly, it's incredibly cheap now, and I feel bad, because the students particularly, or younger, have no opportunity to experiment without putting themselves in danger immediately, right off the bat on the first use. So it's very important for us to continue to make Narcan visibly available. It's available to families, they can walk in, and again, to our community partners. And so we intend to contribute, to continue to distribute to all of the community members, the homeless population, and all of our community partners, also again, with the education and the availability of a peer-to-peer support specialist to help them, guide them through the addiction, and find harm reduction ways of using either safely or minimizing their use. We, the difference is that we're more empathetic, because our lived experience, and so we have that one-to-one connection, where people are a little bit more open to disclose to us and come to us more freely. So we continue to be available to them at both sites, and we hope to continue to provide the service through this very generous grant that we have with the county, so we appreciate you.
You all ought to be very proud of yourselves, that you've saved so many lives. And one quick question, what is the shelf life of the Narcan?
Well, it's supposedly three, four years, but we've been told that we can use it way beyond that. So actually, our first batch extended the shelf life, but our sources tell us that we can continue to give it. And so we've never, we really are now using it to the extent we distribute it long before it expires. So we plan to do the same with this. We're distributing over two, over 200, maybe 400 a month at our particular site. So we're going to, this is going to last us about six months, we anticipate, with the budget that we've proposed for you all.
Good to hear, good to hear. Thank you. And I don't think I've seen you for 15 years, been a long time. See you.
Yeah, I really want to thank Ben and Don for being so, they really met with us a lot, and let us, helped us understand this, coordinating with Cito and Commissioner Stout's office. So very helpful in this process, and helping us determine what was needed. The other thing I'd mention, commissioners, is that we were able to build a heat map, and I'll send that out in a highlight maybe this week, of where the overdose deaths have occurred in El Paso, and the increase in overdose deaths, and we will provide that to our providers, so they can, if they, if they feel like it's useful, they can use that to help guide the distribution efforts, and we'll continue to monitor.
So on the, Christina, on the approval, can we, one motion for both items?
Christina, you're muted.
Sorry about that. The both items have been read into the record, but we do need two separate motions, just to make sure we reflect the vote correctly. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make the motion for item 10, to approve.
Second. We have somebody on teams for public comment, would you like to hear their comments?
Oh, yes, please.
This is Christine Zimmerley, are you on? I see you on teams. You're muted.
Yes, hello.
Go ahead.
Yes, my name's Christine Zimmerley, and I'm a member in one of the chairs of the El Paso Harm Reduction Alliance. And I just wanted to say that on behalf of the El Paso Harm Reduction Alliance, we would like to say that we do, we did come to the city to request Narcan on May 23, and that Narcan was voted in unanimously, but we have not been able to receive the Narcan funding. And so this issue is very important, because the members of the El Paso Harm Reduction Alliance, Aliviana, El Paso Alliance, and others in our community are trying to save lives with this Narcan. And so, you know, I just wanted to, to come and mention the importance of Narcan as well, and, and thank you for your dedication to addressing the opioid crisis, and for your commitment to the well-being of our community. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for calling in, we appreciate it. Thank you for calling in. We appreciate it.
We had a motion in the second. Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
And Commissioner Coronado is absent. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve item eleven.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for public health emergencies. We'd ask for this item to be postponed one week.
I'll, I'll make that motion to postpone.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chief.
Item number thirteen, auditor, discuss and take appropriate action regarding overages and shortages for the period of April first, 2023 through September thirtieth, 2023.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is the semi-annual report that we bring to you all that shows what the shortages have been here at the county. And we look at those to see if there is anything that would indicate there was negligence. We did not find any evidence with that. It looks like it's just a cost of doing business. And we would recommend that you approve for the elected officials to be indemnified for the $160 total for the six months. That's $160.05.
Barbara, I, I had noticed that it's, if you go back to your graph, I see the 160, but I also see the total 260.80.
Right. And that's because at this point in time, the county tax assessor collector, we, on our own, we researched and, and we thought he needed to go through the district courts in order to get indemnified. The county attorneys have issued an opinion that says he does not need to. He could do either through Commissioners Court or through the district court. But the tax assessor collector said he has some concerns and he feels like the particular shortages listed don't qualify to be indemnified by the Commissioners Court. So he's still looking at that and until he makes a decision on that or works with county attorneys further on it, we're not asking you to indemnify him for those shortages.
Okay, so it'll be for the subtotal of 160.05?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, Judiciary and Corrections Grant Award. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the FY24 Specialty Court Program Grant on behalf of the 243rd Inspire Independent Safety Purposeful Insightful Resilience Empowerment Treatment Court in the amount of $200,000 from September first, 2023 through August thirty-first, 2024, pending legal review and approval from county attorney's office. No county match is required. Contract number 2023-0903. And I'd also like to read in item fifteen as well. Grant award, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the FY24 Specialty Court Grant on behalf of the Driving While Intoxicated DWI Program in the amount of $249,230 from September first, 2023 through August thirty-first, 2024. No county match is required. Contract number 2023-0907.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Lethyse Vescano with the Grants Department. We're gonna speak on the DWI Court first, cause Judge Solis, that'll give her a little bit of time to come down and speak on her item. So the DWI Court, even though this is in a program that has been existing for many years, this is a new grant from the governor's office for the program. It is to fund treatment services for their participants and a full-time probation officer and a case manager. Someone from the court was supposed to be here, but I don't see them. So if you have any questions for me, I can certainly answer those for you.
The, the new personnel, how long is this grant for?
This grant, the governor's grants are usually a twelve-month period, but they are continuation grants. And so we apply every single year. Continuation grants are given consideration before other grant funding.
If I may, this is a grant that we've had in the past. We've just reapplied for it and we're now accepting the award of it. So the personnel will continue to be on for the one-year period. And we always do ask for gap coverage in case there's a delay before when we get awarded the grant and when the new fiscal year starts.
That is correct.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Don't see.
Could we?
That was for fourteen, I guess, right? Do we need another motion for fifteen?
That was item number fifteen.
Because she read in fifteen as well.
Yes. She did. And that was for item fifteen that you all just took a motion on?
Okay.
Could you, could we do item number, here's the judge.
Just in time.
And she's got her pink shoes on. Okay, so that grant has already been read in. So this again is very similar to the other grant that we just spoke on. It's just on a different program. This is a new program. This is a new grant. And I'll allow Judge Solis to speak further on her program.
Thank you, Ms. Vescano. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So do you all have any questions for me of the, of the new Adult Felony Mental Health Specialty Court called Inspire? Now that we got the money, the hard work begins.
Now, the 200,000 is specifically for, for what?
So, so you know, oh, I forgot to tell Erin Martinez in the El Paso Times, cause he said it was specifically for staffing. And that's not true at all. Pretty much the bulk of the funding goes to contractual and professional services. So for example, we cannot do the case management, the forensic interviews, counseling outpatient and other mental health treatment services without the assistance with our local mental health authority, EHN. So that there, that's like about almost $77,000. Then we have a more contractual and professional services in the amount of 29,954, so say, mas o menos 30,000. And that goes also to case management, counseling for the participants to include individual and, and group counseling. Again, that comes through our EHN partners. And then we have salary, that the only staffing would be for a probation officer. And them, and that's in the amount of $81,263, just to ensure that everyone's meeting their conditions, their probation conditions. And sort of being that supervising, supervising our participants. We have $10,000 going to bus passes. A lot of individuals are, are community or indigent and they need help getting transportation, especially if their parents, you know, can't bring them to court. And the neat thing, so for vehicle transportation-related services is 10,000. And then we had to throw this in, $1,800 for laptop system and accessories. And that's not, that would be for what the program liaison through our mental health provider services contract. So none of it goes to, really to staffing. In fact, even with that amount, I still am missing, and I will have to find one on my own, and I will, is a program coordinator. Because it's the program coordinator that's gonna be inputting the data, inputting the, the participants, doing the screening, making sure that we, doing the, the grant right, the grant reporting and all that good stuff. But I have some leads with other stakeholders and I'm hoping that will help us with that. Or I'll just write another grant, because I am serious that I want to prove to you all and the judge that we can make a difference before I come to y'all asking for funding.
Sure you can. The nice thing about it, the court loves to see no county match required.
I know. I know. Trust me. I, I, I know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it a go. And, you know, and I'll be, I'm really looking forward to hopefully giving you some, some real numbers that can show you that if we can make this successful, that it will lessen the funding and the, the cost in jail, you know, for the jails as well. Cause that's where a lot of our funding goes to.
Glad you're looking at it that, that way and I appreciate your willingness to start up this program. I think it's had success in other, in other counties and other communities and I'm glad that we have something like that here now. So.
We, I mean, we've been learning, I mean, it's a, it's learning as you go. I, I started the pilot in May, just sort of waiting to see, while we were waiting to receive word if we were gonna get the grant from the governor's office and with about seven participants. So we've had everybody, pretty much the whole team, myself, someone from the district attorney's office, from the public defender's office, from probation and from the CJC, and then our EHN liaison. And we've already learned so much, what works, what doesn't. So now it's just a matter of, of really formalizing it. So.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good luck, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Really appreciate it. And I want to thank Ms. Vescano and the county as well, because I really had.
Microphone.
Judge Anna Pettis as well helped as our local admin judge to help us get this off the ground. So it's about time.
Oh, good luck. I'm sure it's gonna work.
I hope. Thank you. Y'all have a good afternoon. Bye.
Bye.
Item number sixteen, Litigation Justice and Law Enforcement Grant Award. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Office of the Governor FY24 Justice Assistance Program Grant Application on behalf of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office for the Sustain Capabilities for CIT, CRT, and CNT Teams Project in the amount of $44,000 from October first, 2023 to June thirtieth, 2024. No county match is required. Contract number 2023-0905.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Court. Lethyse Vescano for the record with the Grants Department. This is also a grant that the sheriff's office has received in the past, but this is for new items. It's a new grant. Sergeant Acuna is on the phone and would like to speak on this item, if you have any questions for him as well.
Sergeant, the floor is yours.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. So the sheriff's office put in for this grant to try to get a capability on a robot that we do not have at this time. This would greatly impact our ability to handle some of these critical calls, not only for our emergency response team and our crisis negotiators, but also to be utilized during a CIT call-out, anything dealing with mental health that we don't want to directly have our officers exposed to.
I don't have any questions. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant and Charlie.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number twenty, Grant Agreement. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the grant agreement between Emerson Collective and El Paso County to fund the position of migrant services coordinator to improve communication and coordination with the interior receiving communities from November first, 2023 through October thirty-first, 2025, in the amount of $252,000. No county match is required. Contract number 2023-0854.
Anna, the, the floor is yours. If you want it.
You're muted, Anna. We can't hear you.
Irene on the call also?
We don't see her.
Irene is not on the call.
Anna, we can hear you.
Anna, you're muted. We can't hear you still.
We still can't hear you, Anna.
This, while we're, while Anna's working on her sound, this grant came from Emerson Collective. I briefed the court about this in my agenda briefing. Basically, it's to help fund two positions to help coordinate, I'm sorry, I believe it's two. Anna, correct me if I'm wrong. Positions to help coordinate with interior cities on migrant movements. And so this is a two-year grant. Emerson Collective, we did have a correction in the backup. It's not a nonprofit, but it is a organization. It's, it was founded and developed by the widow of Steve Jobs and they tried to address different, different areas of challenge in the country. And so they, they reached out to provide us this grant to help with coordination. Irene's having trouble being called in. Miguel and Alexis, can you all call her in?
Yes, place in the call.
Okay, thank you.
In the meantime, I, I, I think it's, it's great that we're gonna, that we're looking at or, or having the opportunity to receive this type of grant because, you know, more and more, it seems that, that we need to have better communication with some of the communities. I mean, my work with NACO, National Association of Counties, it's very evident with the communication that I've had with them. You know, the, the, the need for, for, for us to be able to, to better our communications with folks, especially the, the places that are receiving all the migrants that are coming, you know? I mean, we just had some folks from Chicago that, that came in and, and, you know, we talked a lot about communications and, and being able to, to just have, have a better opportunity to make sure that we're, that, that, that information is correct, that amounts of people that we're sending is, is correct, where we're sending them, who we're working with and all those types of things. So I think this is great. Sorry, Irene. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Irene, with the others of community services. I think you explained it very well, Commissioner Stout. It's something that we've been working with Emerson Collective for several months already, working on coordinating this effort. They approached us about this opportunity and we quickly jumped on it. We do have quite a bit of communication with the exterior cities such as New York, Chicago, here in Texas quite a bit. We're connecting with folks in Arizona here recently as well. And so this position would help us continue that coordination and that communication. Of course, everything we know comes through El Paso and we just want to make sure that we're facilitating our migrant response efforts with our interior partners in the country so that, for the benefit of our migrants, really. So that they can travel dignified and receive the best services through every community they're going through.
I think this will grow a long way in our, in our services that, that we're providing already. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ms. Schubacher, thank you. Irene, thank you.
Item number twenty-one, Public Works. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the supplemental contract between owner and contractor with Keystone LLC Doing Business as Keystone Contractors and Engineers for the purchase and installation of a new automatic transfer switch for the downtown detention facility in the amount of $1,282,561.33. Funding is available in CPTN 23B DDF renovation transfer switch, contract number 2023-0826.
Mr. Solis.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Robin Solis, Facility Manager's Director. The automatic, I'll give you background history on the automatic transfer switch. This switch is a device that transfers power from a primary source to the generator. The current one that's in place right now, there's a lot of faulty maintenance and it is obsolete. We're asking the judge to approve and authorize us to replace it with a new one.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Item, item number twenty-two, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the fixed price construction contract between El Paso County, Texas, and Sound and Signal Systems of El Paso, Texas, to modernize a fire alarm at the downtown jail facilities. Funding in the amount of $1,720,921.15 is available in CPTN 23B DDF renovation fire alarm. Contract number 2023-0824. $1,720,92.15 is available in CPTN 23B DDF renovation fire alarm. Contract number 20230824.
Good afternoon, Commissioners again. Robin Sully, Facility Maintenance Director. Uh, this current fire alarm system has reached its life expectancy and parts are obsolete. The new one would do, will provide a better protection, uh, for the staff and the property over there at the downtown facilities. We're happy for your approval to replay, purchase and replace it with a new one.
Move to approve.
Second. Commissioner Ogie?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to executive session. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 23A through D, as well as item number 25, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children. So remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Seviles and welcome to Seviles Honey. Right here, we have some pictures from another family business. Um, they're the ones that take care of the bees. They're the ones that, you know, make sure that they're doing good. And these are the few pictures. And then right here, we also have all these pictures. It's just random pictures that we found as well. So here's our table. We have a setup for our courts, our pints, our one pounders, some stirs. So this is a new product that we do have. They are soaps. They are made with our honey. Um, we have honey oat milk, lavender, rosemary, eucalyptus, and pine forest. Not only do we have honey and soap, we also have honey sticks. They look like this. They're also good for coffee, for teas, for just random little snacks that you want throughout the day. So we have this tank. This tank is usually full of honey. So what we do with this tank is we do pour our jars, which I said, like the courts, the pints, and the gallons as well. So we have this cheesecloth here. This is to catch the bees, the dirt, and all that, just so we can pour it into the jars, so we can serve the customers. All these barrels over here are full of honey. Thank you all for stopping by. I hope you enjoyed our tour. Don't forget to stop by here at Seviles Honey in Fabens on Main Street. Our official name is Illumina Public Library, El Paso County's all digital library. The reason that it's named Illumina is because libraries illuminate, um, they bring to light information. Um, we have eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, um, a streaming service to watch movies and to listen to music.
What are we trying to do? We're trying to see the, what are total, total remaining.
We have programming here at the Aguadulce Community Center. We have computer literacy classes, conversational English classes.
B2 plus B3.
And we recently started going over the Microsoft suite. So Microsoft Word. Today I did Microsoft Excel.
You speak.
Do you speak?
Do you speak?
Do you speak? So she checks out a tablet and she checks out a hotspot to use at home for herself and for her kids. Um, we also have a lot of people using the services from home. At first, it was a little bit difficult to explain the concept that it's an all digital library.
But yeah, people are understanding. This is the future. This is necessary if you want to continue to stay relevant.
The hotspot and the tablet is to help, um, bridge that gap and to give all of the folks out here access to internet.
And it's going to be one of those accessible things that makes the entire county more equitable. And of course, uh, it allows people to be, uh, participating in things they might have not been able to do so prior to this, uh, new initiative.
This is our website. And right here on the front, it says, click here to sign up for a library card.
So it's free to everybody who lives in El Paso County, um, regardless if you live in the city or not.
We talked a little bit in our five o'clock hour about a burger joint that we have to, that we have to visit, right?
Pops Burger, of course.
There you go. See, she knows.
Everyone here in Faben knows all about it. How about we let the burger do the, the speaking?
Yeah, let's find out why it's called Pops Burger and no, it has nothing to do with dad. Check this out.
My sister opened it in 1983. It came about because of our last name, Pop Pan. People really didn't know how to pronounce it. So she got the nickname in school, Pops. Especially after games, everybody comes to eat. That's where we're known from. Even places out of town, they come and they want to enjoy our food or get a good burger. And they get to check out what Pops is all about.
What is Pops all about?
Good old fashioned hamburger, family friendly, well-known. Um, we treat you like family, like we know you. So the small town adds to us because that's what makes it the family environment. We love what we do and it shows in our cookie. We're going on our 40 year anniversary this November. Hopefully, one of these days, we're able to expand, maybe possibly a food truck, maybe drive-through, tell about the passion and enjoying doing what you do. And that's exactly what we do. We love what we do.
The Honorable Robert J. Galvan County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's Domestic Relations Office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's Access to Justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information. Accurate, current, freely accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's 8th District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The 8th Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman, Judge Robert J. Galvan, in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney. And it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be successful in accomplishing what they need to do within the court system.
The two-floor library facility has a comprehensive collection of print and electronic resources covering federal, regional, state, and local jurisdictions, conference rooms to accommodate attorneys and their clients, or for meeting space. There are computers with webcam capabilities and private study rooms. Printing, copying services are available to the public for a fee. There is also technology on hand to scan and fax documents.
This is an access to justice initiative. This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands who live in El Paso, because without that, without their ability to have access to information, access to books, access to computers, access to be able to, uh, use the justice system, they're left out in the cold.
The Law Library is a great location to access important legal resources to include published cases, forms, court rules, practice guides, plus historical legal books not available digitally, while guided by experienced staff.
We're open. We have computers that you can use. We have printers.
Law Library staff performs outreach in order to help ensure the most vulnerable in our community is aware of the services offered. The Law Library staff is also key in providing the public in-person information on the history of the county courthouse by providing guided tours to the public.
You can see she's not blindfolded. And throughout history, there's been times where she was blindfolded.
The Law Library is open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM weekdays. For more information, call 915-546-2245, or email eplawlibrary@epcounty.com.
You will find the library to be a welcoming and judgment-free place where you will be met with dignity, respect, and discretion.
The Robert J. Galvan County Law Library is committed to facilitate access to legal information for the citizens of El Paso County.
We're live from Faben's High School having a grand old time. The mariachi band is playing. The kids are actually doing, uh, their final school activities of the year here. The parents are all here getting a chance to check it out. It's been an absolutely awesome event. And behind me, you can see this scoreboard at the Faben's High School Football Stadium. It's named after Amador Villalobos Jr., the athletic complex named after him. Now, he is synonymous here in Faben's, uh, for everything that he did. Unfortunately, he passed away in the 1960s due to an accident during a football game, but they have honored his memory for years here at Faben's. They even have an award named after him. For more on his life and legacy, here is Sam Guzman.
Inside Faben's High School's fieldhouse, you'll find a showcase dedicated to a Wildcat legend.
He was like the model child, um, straight A student. He played every single sport. Was a good kid at home.
He played football, basketball, uh, baseball, ran track. He did everything.
Amador Villalobos Jr. was a great athlete and an even better person. That's why when his life was taken away at 17 years old, it impacted many. In November of 1969, Villalobos Jr. died after being in a two-week coma after he sustained a head injury during a high school football game against Cathedral. It was a tragic event that still lives in the memories of many.
I miss him today. And then 53 years. And I still bring tears, tears to my eyes.
But through tragedy comes light. The Amador Villalobos Jr. Fighting Heart Award was created.
It was established in the early 70s, given to the player who demonstrated the most heart. And this year, uh, my family and I decided to start a scholarship.
You have to have good character, have to have outstanding values, have to be all about Faben's High School. The young man that we chose this year exemplifies all those things and more.
This year's winner of the award and the first recipient of the scholarship was Derek Ramirez, a senior football star who will play- a senior football star who will play college ball at Sol Ross State and who is also related to the man whose name is on the award.
It makes me happy, like extremely happy, because he was my cousin. So, in a way, it makes me motivated. It makes me happy that I can continue that tradition of people that were awarded with that award.
Remembering Amador doesn't stop there. You can also find his name on the school's fieldhouse and on the football field's scoreboard.
I don't think there's a more appropriate name for our stadium than Amador Villalobos Jr. He was perfect. I mean, he was just a wonderful, wonderful young man.
We're pretty proud to see the signs, to see everything, the scoreboard. Seeing all these kids, I mean, they represent what he was, what Amador was, and hopefully, it can continue on for many years to come.
Sam Guzman, KTSM 9 Sports.
Students working alongside with NASA programs. It's just so incredible. And apparently, Fabens ISD offers some really incredible programs to get students ready for college. I mean, they're already ahead of the game.
Ahead of the game, for sure.
Absolutely. So, let's go ahead and toss it over to Toni, Toni Davis, as she's going to talk a little bit more about what this incredible district has to offer. Andy, Monica, Fabens High School tells their students to reach for their stars. And with their early college program, as well as their rocket program, you could see here, they're able to even go beyond that. And so, with their early college program, they are able to graduate with their associate's degree, which allows them to get college credit. The school also has the rocket program for kids who want to focus on engineering. In that class, they build a rocket from scratch, while learning team...
Go ahead, Jessica.
Commissioners, Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item number 24, discuss and take appropriate action regarding HB4 and other immigration and border enforcement actions by the state.
No action?
No action.
No action for item number 24. And for item number 25, we have not reached the time, so this completes all the items on today's agenda.
We're adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you to our hearing, our sign language folks out there. Thank you all. I thought for sure we'd be out by 11:30, but it didn't work out.
This completes today's meeting at 3:11 p.m.